My life's been pretty...
Leon's not coming either.
Oh, Mayor's not coming yet.
Leon's her phone.
And Leon's not coming. Randy's not here.
Randy's not here either?
We are now.
Good evening and welcome to the July 21, 2015 regular meeting of the Burnards Township Planning Board. Please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unafraid, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law of 1975, notice of this meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Burnards was posted on the bulletin board in the reception hall of the municipal building Collier Lane, Basking Ridge, New Jersey, was sent to the Burnardsville News, Burnardsville, New Jersey, to the Courier News, Bridgewater, New Jersey, on January 12, 2015, and was electronically mailed to all those people who have requested individual notice. The following procedure has been adopted by the Burnards Township Planning Board. There will be no new cases heard after 10:00 p.m. and no new witnesses or testimony will be heard after 10:30 p.m. Fran, roll call please.
Ms. Alper?
Here.
Mr. Calucci?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Kleiner?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Here.
I do not see Ms. Pavlini. I don't know if...
She called in. Her daughter is...she's bringing her daughter home from a medical emergency. She has to be excused.
Okay. Ms. Pedici?
Here.
Mr. Plaza?
Here.
Mr. Santoro told us in advance he would not be here. Ms. Axt?
Here.
Mr. Harris also told us he would not be here in advance of the meeting.
So is there a motion as to Mr. Harris, Mr. Santoro, and Ms. Pavlini?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Pedici.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Kleiner. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? To excuse the absence. Hearing no opposition, the motion's carried. And again, that was a motion to excuse those absences previously recited. The minutes will so reflect. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. That is, the May 19, 2015 regular meeting minutes which went disseminated in advance of the meeting. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I have...a mayor. I'm a mayor. Mr. Chairman, I have a...a comment? Would you rather have the motion first?
If we could get the motion...
Yeah, okay.
And thank you for the field commission.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the May 19 minutes as...
Special meeting.
Special meeting is drafted.
Is there a second?
Second. So seconded.
Thank you, Ms. Pedici. Okay. Discussion on the motion, Ms. Malley.
Yeah, I'm marked as absent. Excuse me, I'm marked as late. I arrived at 10 because I was recused from the earlier portion of the meeting.
Yeah, maybe we could just move Mr. Malley up to the members present with that explanation instead of marking him late because he wasn't...
Sure.
I arrived at 10 after recusing.
That wasn't tardy. All right, with that, that's all.
Ms. Kleiner, that amendment is acceptable to you?
And I'll second the amendment.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, the roll call, please.
Ms. Alper?
Yes.
Mr. Calucci?
I'm staying.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Kleiner?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yes.
Ms. Pedici?
Yes.
Ms. Axt?
Yes.
Mr. Plaza?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of charges against escrow accounts. Tonight, we're considering those of Jonathan Drill Esquire for June 2015 and those of EKA Associates, June 16 through 30, 2015. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the charges as stated.
Thank you, Ms. Alper. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Axt. Any discussion on that motion?
On the bell, have they been notified that they have negated the escrow?
Yes, they have.
I imagine they have. Thank you, Ms. Florio.
I may have to send them a second letter, but yes, they have been notified.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Pedici. Any other comments or suggestions? Okay. Seeing none, then roll call, please.
Ms. Alper?
Yes.
Mr. Calucci?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Kleiner?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yes.
Ms. Pedici?
Yes.
Ms. Axt?
Yes.
Mr. Plaza?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we have two items next up for completeness review. The first one is 131 Morris Town Road Investors LLC, PB 15-002, Block 801, Lot 2, 131 Morris Town Road, preliminary and final site plan in both variants. Oh, good evening.
Yes, good evening, Chairman. Members of the Board, President Eddie Walfrid, Dave Pidding, and the applicant, 131 Morris Town Road Investors LLC. Through the completeness hearing, we received incomplete for due date, 11. May re-submission with the revised...
My apologies. You have to turn on the light.
Ms. Onya?
Before you preemptively comment, I'm just gonna have Mr. Schley, our Council Planner, take us through the...his memo.
Sure. I issued a completeness...actually, I issued a completeness review memo back on June 11, 2015, which indicated there were a couple items deficient. The applicant made a re-submission and I issued a second completeness review memo dated July 13, 2015, indicating that all the required items have been submitted.
Terrific. Do you have anything further?
Nothing further.
Okay, is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to deem the application for 131 Morris Town Road Investors, preliminary and site...final site plan, PB number... number PB 15-002, Block 801, Lot 2, 131 Morris Town Road. I deem a motion to make it complete.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Pedici. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Alper. Is there any discussion on that motion?
My apologies, gentlemen.
Yes, Ms. Florio?
Who made the second?
Ms. Alper did.
Ms. Alper.
Ms. Alper?
Did you have any further comment on the motion?
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm trying to do two things at the same time and it's not working. My apologies.
Sorry. Forgive me, I'm just having a... No further discussion seen, then please roll call, Ms. Florio.
Ms. Alper?
Yes.
Mr. Calucci?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Kleiner?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yes.
Ms. Pedici?
Yes.
Ms. Axt?
Yes.
Mr. Plaza?
Yes. Do we have any idea when this is gonna be listed? Do we?
Well, we have tentative, Lee. Put them on October 6th. That's tentative. We've not talked to them about it at all.
So that's a tentative date. Obviously, it'll firm up as we get closer to it. Okay, thank you, Council. Our next matter on for completeness review is Ecological Solutions for Mine Brook Road LLC, PB 12-005B, Block 4701, Lots 2.01 through 2.13, amended preliminary and final major subdivision, amended preliminary and final site plan, PB 12-005B. Mr. Schley?
Yes, I issued a completeness review memo dated July 7, 2015. In that memo, there are six items listed as deficient.
Okay, is the applicant present on that?
I'm very sorry. You gotta be a lot closer.
You were kind of walking up to the mic. Just state your name, please, spell your last name.
Certainly. It's Eric Rupinarin, R-U-P-N-A-R-A-I-N, and I'm the engineer for the applicant on this amended portion of the Mine Brook Road project. We did receive your planner's memo. There's a couple things in here that...what the applicant is looking to do is, there was a feature that was approved as a part of the original subdivision and site plan, and we're looking to eliminate that feature, and that is the bio-retention swale. So a couple...
I'm very sorry, but for some reason or another, you've gotta have to get really close to it.
You gotta speak louder, too.
Okay. Is that better?
Yes, much better.
There was a bio-retention swale that was approved as a part of the original subdivision and site plan. The applicant is now seeking an amended preliminary and final subdivision and site plan approval to eliminate that swale. So we did submit the amended application. I've looked and reviewed the planner's memo, and there are a couple things in here, for instance, that's being requested, and one item is construction details, which, since we're eliminating a feature and we're not adding anything as a part of this amendment, that really doesn't apply to this particular project. We also submitted a...
Why don't you go item by item?
No.
And then let Mr. Schley respond. Well, there are a couple features that are...aside from eliminating the swale, there's an outlet structure or another piece of pipe there that's gonna be shifted over. I mean, this is really...you can have a discussion with the board engineer about it, but there needs to be construction details. If you're not changing anything, the features that are shown on the plan...it's a minor item. I wouldn't argue over it tonight. I'm looking for details that may be exactly the same as is shown on the approved plan, but to me, it looked like something was changing on those details.
I think the only thing that was actually changing in that area was the grid.
Can I ask you something? Tonight's July 21st, and he issued that letter July 7th, correct?
Yes.
Why didn't you call him? Why are you coming here, bringing it up for the first time in front of the board without calling him first?
I did not.
All right, would you consent to adjourning this so that you, in the interim, would have an opportunity to contact Mr. Schley? Because going through this point by point...
It's not a real good use of time.
And it's also not likely that we're going to entertain a submission waiver request on the fly without our planner having had an opportunity to consider it. So we would probably be inclined to deem it incomplete. And so instead of doing that, would you consent on behalf of the applicant to an adjournment?
In other words, you're gonna extend the board's time to determine whether or not it's complete? Because if you don't, they're gonna deem it incomplete, then you can apply for a waiver after, and then the 45-day clock starts again.
That's fine.
If I could just jump in there, there is one item that I think we can address.
If we're not gonna do everything, let's not do it.
No, no, well, it's gonna be incomplete, but if the applicant's gonna come back, maybe if they know, if the board is willing to grant at least one waiver, then they don't have to worry about that item, rather than, you know, the board...they may come back and, you know, they could have at least information on the one item, which I think is a pretty simple one.
Okay, what's that?
It's the environmental impact assessment and project report. Their change to the plans is strictly related to eliminating a drainage feature, a swale. They submitted a detailed stormwater management report, so basically, they're submitting the portion of the environmental report and project report that is relevant to this. In my opinion, what they're doing as far as the drainage change does not affect any other aspect of the project, as far as traffic or economics or any other environmental concerns. And, you know, rather than them going through the motions with an environmental impact assessment and project report, you know, they are...I suppose they're requesting a waiver of that, and as far as at least a submission requirement, if the board feels they need some information on some other aspect other than stormwater management, they can request it during the hearing process, but it certainly, to me, doesn't seem like that's necessary as a submission requirement.
All right, so we've been given that guidance, you've got that feedback, but you need to address the other issues in advance. Do we have an idea when we can get this re-listened?
Well, we think we can re-listen August 4th. I think, though, so that the board doesn't deem it incomplete tonight, you should consent to extend the completeness determination 45 days, because if they deemed it incomplete tonight, that would start the 45-day clock. Do you consent to a 45-day extension from tonight?
Yes.
Now, knowing that, if you talk to Mr. Schley and work out any differences, and if you still need waivers or whatever, August 4th, you could be slotted on for another completeness determination.
That's perfectly fine. I'll give David a call tomorrow, and we'll work out any missing items.
Terrific. And just to...so we're clear, you have the authority on behalf of the applicant to give the extension that you just gave the board?
The applicant, unfortunately, is not here.
No, but have you been authorized by the applicant, too?
I have not spoken to the applicant.
Here's another problem. I didn't wanna say this, but he's an engineer, he's not an attorney, and that's another problem, but I didn't wanna start...
He could have been given a...
Is there any real warrant to deem it incomplete?
Yeah, I think if you don't have the authority to give us that extension, unfortunately, we have no choice. It's not gonna change the outcome. You can still confer with Mr. Schley. We'll get the application back on track. Okay. Is there a motion?
I move... Go ahead, Mr. Chair, that we deem the application incomplete.
Thank you, Ms. Alper. Second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Pedici. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Alper?
Yes.
Mr. Calucci?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Kleiner?
Yes.
Ms. Malley?
Yes.
Ms. Pedici?
Yes.
Ms. Axt?
Yes.
Mr. Plaza?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion's granted, which means the application's deemed incomplete, but you'll contact Mr. Schley. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Malley, you'll be leaving us at this time?
Yes, I will.
On the next application. Have a good evening, sir.
Thank you.
Does anyone else keep partying us? Mr. Calucci, have a good evening, sir.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the continued public hearing Islamic Society of Basking Ridge Inc., PB 12-001, Block 9301, Lot 2, 124 Church Street, preliminary and final site plan approval. Okay. Your appearance, Mr. Raymar? Thank you. Mr. Simon, how about your appearance, as long as just in keeping with custom? Good evening, Mr. Simon. Before we proceed with the application, there's some housekeeping items that Mr. Drill will address.
We have two housekeeping items. We still have Mrs. Loretta Quick's PowerPoint. Remember, she presented the PowerPoint, she testified. It wasn't admitted into evidence that night. You're gonna work out some differences. It got very close. She had told us she couldn't be here tonight. She submitted what she thinks complies with whatever you two guys worked out, and it ends up apparently that there's still a couple differences. So again, until the two of you, meaning the applicant and Mrs. Quick, reach an agreement, I don't think we should put this into evidence tonight, and then if you can't come to an agreement at the next hearing session, then the board will have to make the call on it. But I know you guys are very close, and so if you could just get ahold of her, like tomorrow, email her, and I'm sure, I believe her husband is here, he will tell her to expect contact by the applicant so she can finish working out this thing so it could be admitted, okay?
Surely, but you understand that I'm not allowed to speak.
Absolutely. I didn't ask you to speak for I asked you to pass a message on it. I'm sure you can do that.
Yeah, we'll see.
That's the first housekeeping item.
Mr. Raymar, if for some reason you don't come to an agreement, let's say by the Thursday prior to the next meeting where this would come up, can you put in writing, articulating your objections to whatever aspects of the exhibit the applicant has, this way we can consider it in advance and be ready to rule?
Yes.
The second housekeeping item is that Mr. Simon and Mr. Raymar presented a joint suggestion to the board, and I'm gonna paraphrase from it, and it's my understanding that the chairman agrees with it except for one part we'll town mention, and then my understanding is the chairman is gonna want to so rule and ask the board if anyone wants to make a motion to overrule him. So this is a letter, I'm paraphrasing from a letter dated July 16th, to the board from Mr. Simon, with a copy to Mr. Raymar, myself. Regarding the above referenced matters scheduled for hearing on July 21, 2015, please accept this letter as a joint request to the board from Mr. Raymar and me. We respectfully request, in the interest of continuity and having an orderly conclusion of the...to the application, that if the public portion of the July 21, 2015 hearing extends beyond 9:30 but ends before 11:00 p.m., neither Mr. Raymar nor I would be required to give our respective summations until the August 4th, 2015 hearing. Under those circumstances, at the conclusion of the public portion of the hearing, in parentheses, sometime between 9:30 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., the board would close the public portion of the meeting. Should public comment on July 21 extend past 11, we would respectfully request that the board consider possibly extending the meeting that night for 30 minutes or so in order to bring the public comment portion of the hearing to an end on July 21. Should the public portion conclude before 9:30 on July 21, council agrees that Mr. Simon would present his summation that evening, meaning tonight, to conclusion, and Mr. Raymar would then deliver his summation at the August 4th hearing. Finally, should the public portion on July 21 not conclude by the end of the evening, the goal would be to complete the public portion on August 4th to be followed by summations by both council that evening, each summation not to exceed 90 minutes. Kindly advise, as soon as you can, the disposition of the above request. Now, I also requested that the August 4th meeting start at 7:00 p.m., and I had indicated to them, but I would indicate that the chairman was not inclined to start that meeting any earlier, but that everything else, he thought he was in agreement with, and he was gonna so rule and ask the board for if anyone wanted to make a motion. Am I correct?
That's correct. And with the start time issue being that it logistically creates problems, both in terms of coordinating the use of the meeting room as well as notice requirements, so that's why we're not inclined to do that, or why I am not inclined to rule on that. Is there a motion from the board overruling the preliminary decision? Okay, seeing none, then that's the decision on the joint request from the applicant and Mr. Simon. Anything else, Mr. Drill?
Nope.
Well, before we're gonna...we're just gonna have a reading of the statement that we've been reading at the commencement of public comment meetings for the benefit of everyone here, and to give everyone a break, Ms. Alper has graciously agreed to read the statement this evening.
Ms. Alper was told to read the statement this evening. This is the continuation of the hearing on the Islamic Society of Basking Ridge, application for construction of a mosque on Block 9301, Lot 2, known as 124 Church Street, and tonight we are in the portion of the hearing which is known as the public comment portion. For the public's benefit, so that everyone will understand a little bit about the process, the board has rules that apply to the manner in which the planning board is required to proceed, and previously, as you know, the applicant, the Islamic Society, presented its evidence and testimony, which was then followed by the objectors' evidence and testimony through objectors' attorney, Mr. Simon. This is now the third portion of the hearing, known as the public comment portion, and there is a rule that applies to it which states that, after the applicant's presentation and then the objectors' presentation portions of the hearing, the board shall thereafter recognize public comments by interested parties, provided that those making comments are sworn, and each such interested party is subject to cross-examination and questioning. So the way this will proceed is that we will recognize anybody who wants to make a public comment. You will then be sworn and testify to the facts which you believe are relevant to the application, whether you're in favor of or against it, or just have comments that you want the board to consider in deliberating on the application, and once you make those statements, you'll then be subject to cross-examination. Also, the board rules state that the board may exclude irrelevant, immaterial, unduly repetitious evidence and/or disorderly testimony. We urge everybody to please be respectful of each other. Everybody has a voice. The whole purpose of this is so the board can hear what is on the public's mind that is relevant relating to the application, so that we can fairly consider what's before us. Please, it is not helpful to us for people to either cheer or clap or make negative comments about anything that's being said. We have to consider the evidence. We must consider the facts within the law that constrains us, and people's emotional sentiments will not help us come to that conclusion. So we do ask that everybody be respectful, and you will be heard if you want to be. All the statements that are provided to the board, as we stated, must be sworn testimony, which, as well as any exhibits, must be relevant and material in order that the board allows it into evidence. The reason we make that point is because there were previous rulings made relating to the application. The board previously ruled on two issues. The first related to traffic on Church Street, and the second related to sewer capacity and hookups. What we ruled is that neither of those issues is within our jurisdiction. The board will not consider any testimony or exhibits on the issues of traffic on Church Street and sewer capacity hookups because they're irrelevant and immaterial as a result of being outside of our, this board's jurisdiction. That does not mean that they're irrelevant or immaterial to other agencies considering the application or other aspects of the application, but this board cannot consider these issues in the application for site plan approval, which is pending before this board. We urge the public to avoid introducing any irrelevant or immaterial testimony or exhibits because the result will be objections from the applicant's counsel, which will have the effect of interrupting the flow of the public's presentations. Members of the public are, of course, entitled to submit any comments, exhibits, or evidence to the proper forums regarding the Church Street traffic and sewer issues. The Church Street traffic issue is before the county planning board, and the sewer hookup issue will be before the Burnards Township Sewerage Authority and the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. So you will have an opportunity to address those issues before those two agencies or organizations, but if any comments are addressed to them in this forum, we must ask you to cease your testimony regarding those issues. We cannot consider them. The board's rules are on the township website. You can download them, and the citation of the particular rule to which we have been referring is Rule 2:2-3.F. like Frank, and it's under the section captioned "Order of Presentation." Another relevant and important rule is Rule 2:2-9, which is captioned "Evidence and Exhibits." And referring to two sentences, the board must follow case law precedent as to admission of evidence in administrative proceedings. The last sentence of Rule 2:2-9 states that the board may exclude irrelevant, immaterial, unduly repetitious evidence and disorderly testimony. Ms. Florio is going to put a pad of paper on the table, and we ask that, when the chair recognizes you, come up to that place, write your name and address on the pad, and it will make Fran's job easier in taking the minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Alper. Appreciate it. Okay, with that having been said, we're gonna resume public comment. Ms. Florio?
I believe you were sworn at some other point. We're gonna do it just in case, but could you just write your name down first? You swear that the comments and testimony that you will give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you guide?
I do.
And can you state your name and your address for the record?
Michael Hart, 14 N. Road. I do want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Madam Vice Chair, board members. Also, a special thanks to Ms. Florio, and I've also...
Mr. Burr, you're either gonna have to pick up the mic...
Take the handheld.
Yeah, the handheld mic, and hold it directly.
This one here?
Yep.
Yes, yes.
Right up to you.
Okay. Well, thanks again, and I've also enjoyed the interaction with you, Mr. Drill and Mr. Raymar. And perhaps, as someone else had said about many folks that we've met in town through this process, and as I stated in the beginning and repeat today, that I have appreciated the friendly conversations I've had with Mr. Chordry over the years, and perhaps as Mr. Hagan had said, Mr. Chordry, it's sorry you had to go through all this. And maybe as Mr. Santoro said, the board put this...the applicant in this position. But those aren't reasons to actually approve the application, because if anything, those...I'm[1740.44] I'm not certain, those aren't the reason to disqualify board members, but I'll leave that to the board. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to first make a motion to dismiss this application for lack of standing. And that basis is, it's probably fair, somebody says, why after three years are we even still here? And this application should have been dismissed on day one. I think actually the board's own rules say that the application needs to be signed by the property owner or record or agent for complete aspects of the application. And unlike what Mr. Drill advised on the jurisdiction of the sewer issue, the applicant does not have standing to file this application, because they're not the owner of the easement. And they, I think it's clear that they lack a sufficient interest in purported sewer easement to even file an application before this board, and therefore it should be dismissed for lack of standing.
Jackson.
I don't know if an objection's appropriate, because he's making a motion, so are you making a formal motion on this point?
Yes, I am.
Regarding sewerage. And Ms. Alper just read a statement for the third consecutive meeting that anything dealing with sewers is not before the board.
He's making a motion to dismiss based on standing. We're going to hear the basis. The basis might not be legitimate, based on that argument that you're going to make, but I think in fairness, he should be able to make the motion, and then you'll be able to oppose it.
Because even Mr. Drill had stated, it's not within the board's jurisdiction to resolve property disputes, but those are recorded property interests.
Okay. I need you, for the benefit of the board, to be a little more specific as to what the actual basis-- I think I know, I think I can infer from what you're saying what the basis of the motion is, but I need you to articulate it a little more directly.
That is, well, to the degree that this site plan application includes the easement across the Quik property, and Mr. Raymar states himself--
The application does not include anything, your property's not in the application. I know that your contention is they don't have an easement to run the sewer line under your property. So what the chairman is asking, how does, whether or not they have an easement to have the sewer under your property, impact their standing to bring an application for development on the property they own? Because I believe that that's the application he signed his own.
Mr. Drill, I think you're referring to Quik--
Yes, I'm sorry. What did I say?
You said me.
I'm sorry, Mr. Quik's property.
Well, repeat your theory again, please.
I'm trying to understand your theory. My understanding is from looking at the application, the applicant signed the application for the subject property, meaning where they want to build the mosque, and that the applicant owns the property on which the mosque is going to be constructed. Is that your understanding?
On the one-twenty-four Church Street, without the easement or the purported--
Right, without the easement.
I would say, repeat that again, because I'm not--
I'll tell you what, my advice to the board is, standing is necessary to make an application on a particular property. If the application is being made for one-twenty-four Church Street, to have a mosque on it, if the applicant owns one-twenty-four Church Street, or if the applicant didn't own it, and they had property owners consent to file the application, they would have standing to file the application for development on one-twenty-four Church Street. I believe that this motion, that the dismissal based on standing, the theory of the motion is, that the applicant doesn't own a sewer easement over Mr. Quik's property, that's, in my legal opinion, irrelevant to standing to bring this application. That goes to the underlying, the board shouldn't approve this, because they have no sewer easement, where I've already weighed in, the board has weighed in, in fact, the Bernard's Township Sewerage Authority has weighed in and said they need to come here first before they'll consider it. So unless Mr. Bart has something more on standing, I believe you're barking up the wrong tree with sewer on standing.
Is that a proper recitation, or accurate recitation of the basis of your motion?
Well, I think it's as far as the demarcation between a piece of property and the easement, but I'm not certain I would agree with Mr. Drill that a sewer hookup versus knowing, if they actually admitted they didn't have an easement and didn't have an accord--
But that's not-- It's not a standing argument, that's an argument to deny the application.
Well, you're talking about the scope of the application. I disagree with Mr. Drill on the scope of the application.
But you're talking about the applicant's requirement to demonstrate that they will have adequate sewer service to the property if granted approval, is that--
Well, now, I'm not talking about the sewer hookup, because that really is, that they're saying that easement is part of this application.
Okay, I understand. I understand your motion. Does any board member have a question for Mr. Bart concerning the motion that he's making before we turn it over to Mr. Raymar to weigh in on opposition? Mr. Hagan?
Could you ask him to restate the entire motion, just because it's becoming a feastmeal?
Okay, so--
Well, I made a motion to dismiss for lack of standing.
Okay. Mr. Hagan, and I think some other board members, are not clear as to the specific basis why you think you're entitled to win that motion. And so now, without any interruption from the board, we're going to ask you to present it again.
Well, and so, the applicant lacks the standard, the standing, because they have an insufficient interest in a purported sewer easement to even file an application. Mr. Raymar himself admitted that there was no recorded sewer easement to serve the property, and actually, although Mr. Drill may have tried to label it, Mr. Raymar stated he did not know what it was, as far as describing what type of maybe adverse possession. And so if that easement is part of the application, and the application must be signed by the property owner of record, and this is not recorded, therefore they do not have standing.
Is there any follow-up questions from the board? Okay, seeing now, Mr. Hagan?
Am I correct in understanding that what we're talking about is the sewer easement beyond our jurisdiction, or are we talking about something other than--
We're talking about an easement across somebody else's property.
May I ask a question of Mr.--
Sure, absolutely.
Are you saying, Mr. Bart, that because we're not aware of the legal existence of an easement across the Quik's property, that the applicant therefore does not have standing to make the application before the board?
Well, not only aware, but the applicant is not even proposing that they have a recorded interest.
Mr. Raymar, do you want to reply to the motion?
I would argue against the motion for the reasons that Mr. Drill articulated. This is an application for the site of the proposed mosque. We have all the required ownership, and therefore all the required standing. Everything that goes on beyond the four corners of our property is for some other jurisdiction and for some other day.
Any questions for Mr. Raymar? As my preliminary ruling, the issue that you're raising with respect to the easement is outside of our jurisdiction to consider. It doesn't relate directly to this application or the property that is the subject of the application. That's not to say it isn't a valid issue to be raised before some other border agency, but it's just not inappropriate consideration for this board. So the motion is denied. Is there a motion by the board concerning that preliminary ruling? Okay, so that then is the decision of the board. You can proceed with the rest of your presentation.
Okay, thank you. If I may ask, because it's a motion, Mr. Simon's allowed to speak on any particular motions, or no?
That was your motion, adverse to the applicant, so the applicant was permitted to reply to the motion, but it would not be appropriate for others to chime in.
My second motion is to transfer this proceeding to the Board of Adjustments to determine whether this is a house of worship or a community center. Now, as, Mr. Plaza, you asked yourself of Mr. Raymar whether it was last month or the month before, and Mr. Raymar, he admitted himself that they had presented no religious expert testimony in three years.
Just to clarify, why, the motion to transfer it to the Board of Adjustment is, are you implying that the planning board does not have jurisdiction to make that decision themselves?
Yes.
Okay, so there's case law that says--
Let's go on first.
Well, okay, what basis do you rely on to say that the planning board does not have jurisdiction to make that determination themselves?
Well, are you, you're saying that they do?
I'm asking you, you made the motion. On what basis do you say the planning board doesn't have jurisdiction to make that determination themselves? On what basis is it only the Board of Adjustment that can make that determination?
Well, I think one is, as you say, whether it's the case law, but the one actual location they, the applicant cited themselves, which-- I'll get to that in a moment, had my exhibits a different way. The Islamic Center of Morris County, in that case there, they sent it to the Board of Adjustments to determine whether--
Who sent it?
What's that?
In other words, if you went and filed the Board of Adjustment application for an interpretation or something, I don't know if the Board of Adjustment would hear it, but you have that right. But there's case law that says if an applicant comes to the planning board, we're talking about NJSA forty-colon-fifty-five-D-dash-seventy-B. Seventy-B is the statutory authority for a Board of Adjustment to issue interpretations. Planning board does not have statutory authority to issue an interpretation. So if someone wants an interpretation, you have to go to the Board of Adjustment. If you want an interpretation on that, file an application with the Board of Adjustment. But there's case law that says the planning board, when it has an application before it, if an issue is raised on whether or not they have jurisdiction over the application, all the cases say that the planning board has jurisdiction to deter, can interpret to determine whether or not it has jurisdiction. So my advice to the board is, this board does have jurisdiction to make that determination. That doesn't stop you from trying to go to the Board of Adjustment, although I have a feeling if you went to the Board of Adjustment at this late date, they might ask, you know, why you waited so long, but that'd be between you and them. But again, my opinion is that the planning board has jurisdiction, there's no case, whatever that supports Mr. Bart's position on this.
Mr. Raymar, anything to add?
Only that this board has at least twice, if not more, already ruled that this is an application for a house of worship, and therefore a permitted use in this zone.
Decide whatever prior action we may have taken. The motion goes to it being transferred to the zoning Board of Adjustment. Do you have anything to add as to that requested relief? The motion doesn't ask us to make that interpretation. Again, it's suggesting that this is not the appropriate board to make that determination. Do you have anything to add beyond what Mr. Drill said?
No, the motion should be denied.
Any questions from the board? For the reasons stated by the board council, that motion is denied, Mr. Hagan. Do you have any other motions?
Proceed, I'll proceed. Mr. Chairman, I would like this board to determine that this is a house of worship or a community center, and one thing that Mr. Raymar said, this board made many straw poles, and maybe as Ms. Alper said, really the board made two determinations. And at whatever point that, well, if Mr. Raymar is alleging that the board made a determination, on what basis as compared to, and I think that's part of the purpose of the public comment, to bring additional facts and evidence. There's a lot of maybe determinations that the board has made, that the chair still, or the other members still said, that the public would have their due time to bring an additional testimony, which I presume could change those. I mean, no different than, you know, how many straw, well, maybe somebody else can say, but how many straw poles has this board taken that they're still going to have to revote upon? I suppose other than the two that Mrs. Alper just said a moment ago, that you're expecting evidence to be presented to weigh in on some of their early determinations. I think as Mr. Drill had said, because if you stop interacting with the applicant, maybe it goes too far, right? But I think what Mr. Drill said himself was, that you still could present evidence, and the public had an opportunity. The public has not had an opportunity to present testimony.
Well, this is your opportunity now.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I would like, and Mr. Drill may have had it marked as an exhibit, but I would like to introduce this document, the ISBR Building Project. I think you had it labeled as MB one. I don't know if you want to change that.
What do you think I have marked on it?
Can I approach and show this thing?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. On a cross, right? There's a cross or something.
And as in Mary, M.B.?
His initials, his initials.
Can you give one of those to Mr. Raymar?
Sure, I have, if you want me, I have one here. And I think previously that Mr. Raymar, he recognized this document as the document of the ISBR.
Chairman, can I see a copy of both of them?
Did you have one for Mr. Simon?
And I believe at the time, that I think it was Mr. Bart brought this to the board--
Mr. Raymar-- You want to speak louder?
I think at the time, and I think it was Mr. Bart who brought this originally to the board's attention, we said that this document is irrelevant, because it's a document that long predates the application, and was a concept that is not embedded in this application. This is not the application.
First, we're just trying to find it.
Yeah. This is just based on my recollection, okay? It's not in the list of documents that were not admitted into evidence, because I don't believe at the time it was proposed to be admitted into evidence. My recollection is that Mr. Bart, can you correctly, if I'm wrong, you tried to use this during cross-examination, is that correct or incorrect?
Well, I think it would be the only other opportunity, right? Because--
I'm asking you a question. When did you try to use this?
I don't know if it was their direct testimony or indirect. That's what you're asking, to distinguish between direct and indirect.
I have a vague recollection that what the board said was, you can't try to get it in under cross-examination, but as part of your case, if it was done by them, bring it up.
I think it was ID only.
Right. So I'm thinking that, I don't think the board has made a ruling on whether this document should go in or not. I think all that was determined was it was not the right time. Now would be the right time if it's ever going to go in. So I would think that, explain to the board, now, they haven't seen it, they shouldn't see it unless it goes in. Explain why--
We need some foundation.
Yeah, foundation to admit it, and then Mr. Raymar is obviously, maybe not obviously, but my guess is, he's going to argue against admitting it, and then the board will make a ruling.
Certainly. Well, I think, you know, by the--
What's the purpose of you wanting to--
It's relevant to what we just discussed, whether or not the board can make a determination whether it's a house of worship or a community center. But you just indicated that the board has that jurisdiction.
What, so, what is the document? Is the document entitled ISBR Building Project?
Right, and it says there that they, to use the project as a community center.
And where did you get this particular document?
It was on the www.isbri.org slash upload slash two-four-nine-two-oh-one-one-one-seven-five-nine-oh-seven.
So let's ask Mr. Raymar. And when, when did you get it off that--
I couldn't give the exact date, but I think it was out there as of today.
Well, put it this way, I'm not asking whether you think it's, when did you, to the best you can, approximate, when did you download it off the site?
Well, the first time we discussed it here at this, I'd have to ask Fran to go back to the minutes. I don't know if it was there, or it has been what, you know, I'm sorry, I don't, I'd have--
Was it, were we at the library, or were we in this room? Do you remember?
No, I don't.
Mr. Raymar, let me ask you--
May I ask a question of Mr. Bart about--
Yeah.
Mr. Bart, did you say that you've seen it since the time that you originally downloaded it?
Yes, yes, I saw it today.
You saw it on the site that you just gave us?
That's correct.
So let's ask the applicant, Mr. Raymar, you've seen this document. Is this document currently on the ISBR website?
I have no idea.
Do we have a laptop in the house?
But what I can tell you is that this is a document that was created in two thousand and eleven for the application.
I understand, I understand that. I mean, do any board members or any board professionals have a laptop? Okay, let me just-- We have a laptop. I'm going to go on, actually, I'm going to ask Mr. Schla, because he's a witness, I don't want to become a witness, to go on the ISBR website and see if this document's on the website. Mr. Raymar, if this document's still on the website, I assume there's going to be no objection to having it admitted.
Whatever is happening--
Right, then he can argue whatever it is, but if it's on the website now, I can't imagine why it wouldn't get admitted.
No, 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 don't, because then you're a witness, so all you have to do--
Mr. Schla, you're looking for that document. Mr. Bart, do you think you could help Mr. Schla find it or not? Or did someone help you find it?
Well, I don't know if that's a fair question, but besides that--
Could you help, well, are you able to help him find this document on the website or not?
I could try, I mean--
Give it a shot.
You might just have to put in the, why don't you just type the, if you type the address. Oh, back screen, yeah, it's going to be. But that's just going to do a Google search, so if you want to come up here and actually enter an address, is that what you want?
Google search.
Oh, okay, okay. All right. We're going to take a five-minute recess while we work this out. All right, we're back on the record. Yes, Ms. Alper?
Almost.
Okay. Okay, there we go. All right, we're back on the record.
This is what we ascertained. So Mr. Barth submitted a document, it's entitled ISBR Building Project. I've marked it for ID only as OB dash one, for ID only. The board is not going to see this particular document. So we asked Mr. Barth if he could go on the ISBR website and find the document. So Mr. Barth went on and he Googled, couldn't find it on the ISBR website. He Googled ISBR Building Project, and up came a document that looks like the document that's marked OB1 for identification, but it's not exactly that document. Things have been changed in it. However, Mr. Barth says he's just interested in the first paragraph. So, in the first paragraph, he's interested in some particular wording in the first paragraph. And so I am going to read from the first paragraph of the document, and then the applicant has indicated that it's not from their website, it's a cachet document that used to be on the website, and they can make their argument from it. But I'm going to read for the record the paragraph that Mr. Barth wants the board to consider and he wants to argue of. Is that correct, Mr. Barth?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so, here is the first paragraph on this document that's, seems to be from the cachet website from Google. It says, same title, ISBR Building Project, and it says as follows. "The Islamic Society of Basking Ridge, Perin, ISBR and Perin, plans to establish a community center for Muslims in the Somerset Hills area of New Jersey that really meets the spiritual, comma, educational, comma, social and cultural needs of our growing community in an open, comma, diverse, comma, inclusive and moderate environment, comma, consistent with the Quran and Sunnah." Period. "For more about ISBR and its programs and services, comma, please visit our website at www.isbri.org." Period. So, Mr. Barth would like the board to consider that, and he wants to make an argument based on that. So I guess, Mr. Raymar, is there an objection to Mr. Barth relying on the paragraph I read and making an argument that would seem to be that the proposed facility is not a house of worship, it's a community center?
The document is irrelevant for all purposes and should not be introduced into evidence or the subject of moral colloquy by Mr. Barth. I have at least four reasons. First of all, the document Mr. Barth presented does not have the language Mr. Drill just read into the record.
I marked the document, okay, Mr. Barth has agreed that this document that I marked for ID only is not going into evidence. What Mr. Barth wants is the document I just read from, the paragraph I read from, for that to go into evidence.
So my second point-
Correct, Mr. Barth?
Yes, thank you.
Is as to that document, which was located in a Google search during the course of the planning board hearing, it's not on the ISBR website, and it is a 2011 document that is not part of this application. It never was part of this application. And what's on that document wasn't applied for, so it's irrelevant. To give you two analogies, the document, I think on that cachet, but this one says-
Okay, don't, don't you, Mr. Raymar, this document is not, Mr.-
I understand.
Mr. Quick has agreed it's not going into evidence.
Mr. Barth.
Mr. Barth, I'm sorry.
But it's as if Mr. Barth would argue, the applicant doesn't have standing to make this application, because on the face of that document, it says that the applicant has yet, not yet bought the property, which it says.
But that's not the application he's making. The application he's making is that-
The point is, it's not the application, it's therefore irrelevant for any purpose. He could also argue, ladies and gentlemen of the planning board, this is an application that would have 50 parking spaces. A lot of water has gone since that point in time. To make an argument about something that might have existed at a point in time but no longer exists is irrelevant to the decision that this board must make to the application that is currently before it. An application is not currently before it for 50 parking spaces, nor is there an application before it for a community center. So those are nice discussion points, but what does it have to do with the decision that this board has to make? And the touchstone of relevance is, is it relevant to anything that the board has to decide? The board does not have to decide on whether to permit a community center. It doesn't have to decide on anything related to a community center. It only has to decide whether the house of worship presented and the multipurpose room that is part of the house of worship comply with the board's ordinances or not. A document that predates the application is no more relevant than something that may have been in the initial application that because of colloquy with the board and its professionals is no longer before the board. So this document, what Mr. Drill read, and what Mr. Barth is trying to argue, none of that is before the board. None of it is relevant to a determination the board must make.
Does the applicant acknowledge that this was material that was previously posted on its website?
Yes, I don't know about, yes, it looks like it was.
Well, it's their web address, right? You don't-
It looks like it was, but it was in 2011.
I understand.
I disagree with your position that it's not relevant. I don't know how much weight should be attributed to it, but it is relevant in that part of what this board is called upon is to determine whether or not the application is for a permitted use and a house of worship being of permitted use versus a community center, which is not. So this is a statement made at some point relative to this same property by the applicant. It's no longer up there, and to your point, it's not a position that's been proposed or taken by the applicant in this application, but it was the prior characterization of the applicant as to its intended use of that property. I think that makes it fair game for Mr. Barth to raise and to make the argument he wants to make. Doesn't mean the argument carries the day, but he should be entitled to make it. And so for those reasons, I'm going to overrule the objection as my preliminary ruling. Is there any motion by the board as to that?
And just to be clear, there's no document that's being admitted into evidence. The document, the paragraph that I read from the document that Mr. Barth found on Google, that's the paragraph that is going to be considered, and that's the paragraph off which Mr. Barth is going to make his argument. Is that correct, Mr. Barth?
That's correct.
And then, Mr. Raymar, you're free to obviously, to address it in your closing. Okay? All right, so now that that paragraph's been read into the record, would you please just conclude your argument as to that?
Yeah, sure, thank you. Even the applicant's direct case, they compared the activities for parking generation of this application to a number of other locations, some of which were community centers, others which were mosques. For example, the Islamic Center of Morris County, Islamic Center of Ocean County, the Balal Mosque, the Islamic Society of Central Jersey, the Muslim Center of Middlesex County. And I think it's even, maybe Mr. Raymar even knows too, but the Ground Zero Mosque is actually a community center, not a mosque. And it seems nationwide, what happens is folks file as house of worships where community centers are not permitted and community centers where house of worships are not permitted, and that's what's happening here. And, you know, again, it was Mr. Raymar himself who, I mean, if it truly is an application for a house of worship, we'll get in later on, because we talked at length here, talked about irrelevant, irrelevant testimony, people who are not qualified about practices, that here, no religious expert testimony was presented when this application began. It'll probably be, what, three years next month? Mr. Chaudry, he was presented as a lay witness, not an expert. Mr. Chaudry admitted under oath he was not an imam, he was not a spiritual leader. He even said to Mr. Orr that they could have an interesting conversation about the definition of a mosque on September 4th, 2012. I believe they said they're not part of a religious denomination. The New Jersey Supreme Court, what was it, Cameron, State versus Cameron, 100 New Jersey, 586, 1985, and even Jehovah's Witnesses in 1988 citing them, must determine whether the activity alleged is in fact religious. So here determining without that, without that expert testimony, of course, besides the fact that the applicant has failed really to state a claim here, that from what you can only gather is that it's a community center. I guess themselves said at one time they had a plan to put a community center here. What changed? No religious expert testimony in three years. So, I mean, unless the applicant had presented some evidence, which they didn't, I mean, we wouldn't be having this conversation. One can only logically conclude that it's a community center and not a house of worship. Therefore, I make a motion for the board to determine that it's a community center and not a house of worship.
That goes to an ultimate determination that must be made as part of the application. So what you're doing is arguing a position that we should take under advisement during our deliberations, okay?
Okay. Continue, straighten my papers here. Continue, straighten my papers here. And, and Mr. Chairman, while your, while the board is considering that determination here, I would like to present this document from the Borough of Rockaway, which talks about the Islamic Center of Morris County that the applicant has referred to, that when you consider the various activities that the, the applicant has talked, going on, one being the teaching of Arabic, that they determine it being a non-religious subject.
Objection.
Well, first of all, have you, have you seen the document?
I haven't seen it, Mr. Raymar hasn't seen it.
And Mr. Simon.
Right. Let's just see what document he's talking about.
Want me to describe the document, and actually the point I'm...
Well, I can tell you, these are, they purport to be minutes from the Borough of Rockaway Land Use Board's meeting of February 24, 2014. Now, I can just, but just by looking at it, they're unsigned minutes, and there's no certification that it's a true and accurate copy or anything like that. And what's the purpose, without making your argument, I assume you want to use whatever evidence was introduced in that case before the Borough of Rockaway Land Use Board, you want this planning board to consider?
Right, I mean, the, the applicant was comparing themselves to...
There's a, there's a, there's a...
I'm sorry?
... to the details, the problem is going to be that no one who appeared in that case is here to be cross-examined or to testify.
Was it a different applicant?
Yeah.
It's got no connection to the applicant, so it's...
Well, Mr. Bart is saying there's a connection. Mr. Bart says that the applicant cited the Islamic Center of Morris County as an example. Am I correct or not?
That's correct, which is...
So that gets you over the relevance hurdle, perhaps, but it's still, this document would be hearsay without an exception, that would allow you to, to introduce it in this proceeding without having a witness to create the necessary foundation, so...
So I'm going to mark this, just for the record, for identification only as OB2, and...
It's, it's excluded as here, so...
Ask the board if anyone wants...
Anybody have a motion?
No.
Okay, thank you. I'll continue. I mean, I have a number of other reasons why this, not only should the applicant, the application be dismissed, but really how the, and as Ms. Alper had talked about earlier about, the applicant provided its evidence and testimony, which really shouldn't qualify, insufficient evidence and insufficient testimony, actually unqualified testimony. And one in particular, by the applicant's own admission, basically, is that they are going to encroach on the fifty-foot buffer on the abate's side of the property. And that's, you can easily derive that when, of course, they're proposing, the way they're proposing to avoid encroaching upon that buffer is to put wheel stops, which Mr. Sly, which his conclusion, I'm sure, can tell you that he himself said they were a bad idea.
Excuse me, I think he's referring to the quick side, not the abate side.
Isn't there detention basin on the...
That's the, that's the quick side of the project. That's on Mr. and Mrs. Quick's side of the project.
What, what is it?
We're the detention basin.
Yeah, you're talking about the parking spots, the wheel stops.
You're talking about which parking? You're talking about the parking next to abate or next to quick?
Which parking have the eighteen...
That's what we're asking you.
It's, it's on the same side as the detention basin.
Okay.
Yeah. To the east.
I'm sorry?
You got the wrong side.
Yeah. It's the quick property.
Yeah, thank you. I didn't think there was any room with all those detention basins. Well, the applicant is proposing wheel stops as a basis for putting in fully conforming-sized parking stalls. And I think it was Ms. Pedici had asked about the concern about tearing up the cars, for one. And actually, there was, it'd be hard to find, but there actually was a class-action suit against a automotive manufacturer for, because they were pulling the bumpers off the cars, the Volkswagen, that's Hess versus Volkswagen of America in Oklahoma, which certified a class-action, 2000, what, 221P3D132. And Mr. Khan, he testified that the wheel stops are designed to prevent the average car from encroaching upon that, that buffer, which, by that own admission, that means some cars are longer than eighteen inches, some are less. So, there's no way that these wheel stops are going to prevent folks from encroaching upon buffer. Now, there was some discussion about the influence of the, of the folks who come to the center. And so, I mean, what's that average, what's that average comprised of? So, Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to introduce is a document from the General Motors website that shows the, the overall length of a Cadillac as compared to the wheelbase, which will help you determine that there's at least, what is it, eighty-seven inches that can overhang between the front and the back. So therefore, whether you back in, I mean, I suppose, I don't know if there's going to be anybody that's going to, maybe the vested monitor will keep people from backing in, but if not, I would like to introduce this document here. If I could show it to Mr. Drill first, Cadillac.
First, Mr. Raymar, please.
Yeah.
I don't know where to begin on this document. Mr. Bart is not an expert, he's, he's not qualified. Who knows what to make of this document? It talks about the wheelbase. What is the wheelbase? Is it axle-to-axle? And then it talks about overall length, but it doesn't tell you how much of the overall length is to the front of the wheelbase, or to the rear of the wheelbase, or between the wheelbases. This document, without some knowledgeable person to interpret it, verify it, and use it, and make a cogent argument from it, is completely irrelevant.
Do you have an extra copy of that for me?
Sure.
One, more than one? No, just one.
If you could just give a description of...
Okay, so the document purports to say that it's from Cadillac website, printed today, July 21, 2015, and on the top it says Escalade and ESV Dimensions Cadillac, and it has dimensions, it says dimensions, and it has useful size and dimensions data and other technical specifications for the Escalade. So I'm going to mark it for ID only at this point as OB3. Leave it to you.
Because this is just something printed off the internet, you don't have a witness to introduce it through, it would not be appropriate to allow you to introduce that. That would potentially create a limitless number of documents that could be printed and somehow try to be introduced in this case. I do think, though, that the argument in and of itself is not irrelevant in that people have experience with automobiles and SUVs, and your point as to a car or SUV being backed into a space where the extension of the car beyond the, the end of the wheel is much longer than in the front is, is, you know, the point's well taken.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Whoa, 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 ask the board if they want to...
Because there, so for that, it's, it's my initial decision to exclude the document. Does anybody have a motion?
I'll just add one thing. If a newspaper article where the reporter identifies him or herself is not allowed into evidence because the reporter's not here, then what the chairman is saying, how do you let a document in off the internet where there's no author identified, even? It's one step worse than a newspaper article.
Could I ask where, you mentioned the number eighty-seven inches, what is that?
Well, that's from the document.
Yeah, because the, your overall...
If the document's not in evidence, it's not appropriate to refer to it or to have the witness testify as to its contents.
But, but may I suggest, just because you got this a little bit cloudied with, with the intervening objection and the decision, why don't you make the argument without referencing the document? You can still make the argument.
Right, don't reference the, any of the dimensions from the document, make your argument based on, you know, a large SUV. Based on, if you have common knowledge, you have knowledge about SUVs in general? That's a question. Do you have knowledge about SUVs in general?
Yes.
Make the argument based on your knowledge.
Thank you, Mr. Drill. Mr. Chairman, as you said, you know, the, the average citizen observations are, right, that, that people, including myself, people back into spaces. And, of course, when you're backing in, you need to know that, in fact, that there's probably more room between when you hit a, a wheel curb in the, in the back than when you do in the front, because generally speaking, you know, the car's overhanged. Matter of fact, if you go and see Mr. Raymar there in Riverwalk, you know, you'll see many folks there having these full bike racks hanging out the back, which some of them, you know, is wider than a person, which has to be, you know, a couple of feet. So, there are, again, it's up to the applicant to provide the evidence to say that there's not going to encroach upon the buffer. And by the applicant's own admission, there being, it's designed to prevent the average car, let alone the fact that the vans that they're going to have for delivering foods, which, did you ever have a van? And yeah, they even hang out even further. So, the applicant has failed to show any evidence why they're not going to encroach the buffer, and therefore they need a variance. It actually wasn't noticed, which shouldn't even be here again. Now, another thing too, and again, I know that this probably, if somebody, somebody asked you about, how many people are going to be on this property by law? Now, and I think it was last, one thing I, I think last was, and I know, Mr. Chairman, you had said you can make some negative inferences if the question's not answered, and one was for Mr. Drill to say to Mr. Raymar under the RLU IPA, could folks, did it limit the number of people on the property? I, to my, to my knowledge, the record doesn't reflect that answer. And so therefore, we have, as you talked about, Ms. Paglini had talked about inconsistent testimony, we've had so much inconsistent testimony about the number of people who could be on this property, whether it's inside the building, outside, because, and part of that might be limited to, or it would be helpful if the applicant had actually provided some religious expert testimony, but till this point, it hasn't been here. Again, three years later, why we're even here? But I do think that, and it was Mr. Lincoln that did testify, he agreed that if you took the total square footage of the building, divided by the five square feet, I think he said four hundred and sixty people in the building. I know we had change of counsel, and I think it was Mr. Fazano that said, well, if we can have four hundred and sixty in the building, we can have four hundred and sixty on the lawn. What's to restrict us? Now, and of course, with all these, nobody really knows, and this is really, and this is, I would reserve any objection, because you could talk about, after all, that's the evidence and testimony. Until Mr. Raymar really summarizes this in a coherent manner, there's nobody presented any evidence here that's really reasonable to rely upon. And so I, I really do reserve any, any additional objection. And I'm not, I wouldn't concede that this is all the public comment going for him, because they have not presented a case here for this debate approval. And you, unless they had that summary, you'd almost have to dismiss it.
Okay. Summation is not evidence. The evidence is in. So this is your opportunity to comment on the sufficiency or insufficiency of that evidence. You cannot reserve the right to comment further after the summation, keeping in mind that the summation itself is not evidence.
Okay. So, that, if, if in fact, at one point, maybe Mr. Raymar will say four hundred and sixty people can be on this property, that translates, according to all your experts and somebody else, three hundred, over three hundred parking spots, not a one oh seven. So I know at one point, early on, there may have been some interaction with the, with the applicant, but we don't really know how many people are going to be the restriction on this property to determine the parking spot. So therefore, so far, what we've heard from the evidence, until you can only conclude that they, their position is four hundred, because of course, they said, we don't agree with this position, you've heard all that, four hundred and sixty people on the property, they need over three hundred parking spots, therefore reject it. Maybe they'll come up with something different at the end, but again, to your point. So, but as you say here, if we can infer that they didn't answer, respond to a question negative, I can only, I can only infer that that's still an open, an open item. And there also was a, a straw poll relative to the detention basin, and whether it's a drainage improvement. And I think it was even Ms. Alper, I mean, I think this raw poll was, was, was actually taken before the fifteen hundred square feet, and what significant, insignificant, but that's a judgment call, and that's your judgment call. But, now, as far as improvements, I mean, of course, you know, the ordinary definition of the Webster, right, Mr. Webster, the ordinary definition of improvement, you would think that it would make something much better than it was before. And I think it was Mr., and Mr. Khan was trying to confuse the fact that this was a stormwater improvement, and Mr. Quinn has said, it doesn't, this development, it's going to increase the runoff, it's just going to control it. And so really, what is the improvement here if, at a minimum, status quo? We don't even know that, because there's been a lot of testimony, early on, right, the county board approved such and such, right? Doesn't exist, right? There's no county board approval. And I believe there's one thing that might still be pending, is the, the second emergency spill-off, so maybe this still needs to be changed, but maybe somebody wanted to answer those questions, because the grant still needs to be changed. So, I, I'm not certain what really is here, the drainage improvements. Now, the state of New Jersey, on their website, you know, I'll try and introduce it and see how far I go, right? Because they talk about retention basin failure. And those failures are two things that people pointed out here, right? Mosquitoes and drowning, right? I mean, probably your parents' worst nightmare. And so here's something from the state of New Jersey website.
Give it to Mr. Raymar, Mr. Simon, and me, please.
Do you want to follow it? Did you want to follow it?
What, this does not look like to me it's from a DEP website.
Well, it was from the state of, give you the website, I guess, if you want.
Well, it, it also doesn't have the, the website name on it, it was prepared by...
It's a PDF.
... individual that looks like a private individual. It has a copy of two different newspaper articles. So what website, what official state of New Jersey website do you say this is from?
www.state nj.us backslash transportation backslash publcat backslash pdf backslash stormwater underscore failure dot PDF.
If this was an official publication of the DEP or a state agency, I'd feel differently about it, but this, this is not. I mean...
Who prepared it?
It doesn't say. Well, the front page says it's prepared by a gentleman named David A. H. D. O. U. T. Well, the front page says it's prepared by a gentleman named David A H D O U T. It doesn't say if he's a PE, an LS, Esk, whatever, we, we don't know. And then the other two pages are copies of newspaper articles.
Mr. Raymar?
That says it all. It's not an official document, there, there's no.
I mean, the, the board, you see, the board's rules say you can take judicial notice of official publications, including governmental publications on websites. This does not appear to be that.
And the attachments are articles, I don't even know which newspapers they're from.
Now, one of them says, one of them says it's, uh, GM News, right? And the other one says Star Ledger. But it, it doesn't really matter, I mean, to me.
Okay. Yeah.
It's not a governmental publication.
Assuming even that the first page of the document is, is a PDF from a government website, it's, it's merely a cover page that then attaches, based on the description as read by Mr. Drill, newspaper articles, which would be hearsay within the hearsay.
Right.
So it's, it's double-layer hearsay, and although there is an exception under our rules to allow the government report, if the report then contains additional hearsay such as newspaper articles, and you don't have the authors of those articles, then we can't allow it.
Okay, sure.
Okay. Just for the record, that's gonna be OB dash four for ID only, and is the board making a motion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, these, I used to talk about things that you would still talk about. These reports, whether, whether you accept this or not, they talk about two problems that have been raised before. One was that they, uh, they breed mosquito problems, and the other one is, uh, the death of people in them. So, I mean, I guess, uh, you know, the, there was no evidence presented why this really was an improvement, other than the fact that reference to a word. Now, I will, if I could present here a, a picture I took myself of a, a retention basin within the town, particularly the Canterbury area. Um, now, the, it is easier to, to see it with the color version, so, uh, first I'll show this to Mr. Um.
Raymar, Simon, then me.
Can I just describe, so, the, the black and white colors may not be, uh, what it's intended to show is all of the gray built up in the.
So first, where is the actual location of that?
At the intersection of Canterbury and Mine Brook.
Okay, and you said you took the photograph?
I took that photo on Sunday.
Okay, and so, that, that photograph, to the best of your knowledge, fairly depicts the conditions of what's in that photo still today?
That's correct.
Okay.
This is, might be my errands, is that location anywhere near the, the subject site?
Uh, what do you define as near?
Well, how about, can you, can you estimate the distance?
How far from the subject property was that photo taken?
How about I ask, um, Mr. Schley, he would know, right?
Well, it's less than two miles.
Oh, definitely. Is it less than a mile?
Yes.
Less than a half mile?
Yes.
How about a quarter mile?
I'd say it's about a couple hundred yards.
Okay, that's your best guess?
Okay.
Okay, okay. Any objection?
First of all, I thought Mr. Bart said this is a detention basin. It's obviously not.
Well, the, the, the picture speaks for itself, though, so that's.
Well, it doesn't, that's part of my point. We don't know what this is a picture of. We know where it was taken, because Mr. Bart testified. We don't know what the design characteristics of it are, so this board has no way to take any meaning from this photograph. It's just a photograph. So it's irrelevant to this application, it's not probative on any issue, and Mr. Bart is not qualified to tie it to this application. We see debris on some concrete, we don't know the design characteristics, we don't know what rules apply to maintaining whatever this structure is, we don't know anything other than have a color photograph, and it's irrelevant under all the rules of evidence of this board or in this state.
Do you want to respond? How, how is this relevant to what we have to decide?
Well, how is it relevant? Um, it is irrelevant, uh, it is relevant to go to the, to the definition of what is a drainage improvement. And, um, this here is a retention basin, unlike, we'll get into the, the confused testimony of the applicant, at one time it's detention, next time it's retention, and maybe it's detention today. Uh, but so it's relevant to actually what is the definition of an improvement? Drainage, yes, thank you.
And on what basis do you determine that that's a retention basin in the photograph?
Retention?
Yeah.
Um, well, I think by the applicant's own testimony, a, a detention really would be holding water, whereas retention, under their, their testimony, has these grills, their grates, or even on their plan, have these exits from the basin.
Okay. I'm not gonna limit, this is not in any way intended to limit what you can argue, but right now, we're dealing with this particular photograph. Do, do you have any expertise in, in water management or drainage improvements where you can offer an expert opinion as to what's identified in that, or depicted in that photograph?
Well, I think we have the common knowledge that that's gravel and, uh, built-up debris, general built-up debris, um, that, uh, is, um, laying in what they, they describe in their own plans as a impervious, uh, concrete, uh, low-water, um, channel.
But you can see that this photograph doesn't depict any condition on the applicant's property?
No, it does not, right.
Uh, then.
I need a copy of that for the record, we're gonna mark that as OB five for ID, and what are you gonna do with it?
Hey, I'm, I'm gonna exclude it on the grounds of relevance. Oh, absolutely, Mr. Simon. Well, Mr. Simon's sitting there, is there any motion by the board? No? Okay.
Mr. Simon, when you're done, can you walk it up to me? Thanks. So again, for the record, OB five for ID only, the only was excluded.
Now, when it comes to the, the basin that the applicant is intending to propose and put on the subject property, uh, you may recall, early on, Mr. Khan testified that the, uh, actually in August sixth, two thousand and thirteen, that he previously designed a detention basin to take and hold water, not let water go into the ground, no permeability, which I, which I think from, you're an expert, which means it's impervious. And then, um, somewhere along the line, they, uh, they said, well, we're gonna put in an infiltration, infiltration basin. Now, uh, and then in September of two thousand and fourteen, Mr. Raymar talked about it being a detention basin along Church Street. Uh, in September of fourteen, Mr. Raymar referred to a, the fencing of the detention basin. In September of two thousand and fourteen, moves well closer to the detention basin. Well, I think you really have, uh, two, uh, well, two reasons to deny it. By the applicant's own testimony, if the, if the, if it's gonna be a detention basin, it's impervious, according to their testimony, and was not included in the calculation, therefore they don't, they don't satisfy the impervious coverage. And if it's infiltration, then it's going to be, I think it was Mary, um, Ms. Baglini, who talked about it being, uh, damaging to the adjoining property. So what I'd like to show here is actually something from, um, and actually something that the applicant, I think, referred to about the New Jersey Stormwater Best Management Practices Manual. This one's dated February two thousand and fourteen, they have a later version. Um, and it really, it talks about.
Show everybody, I mean, show Mr. Raymar, show Mr. Simon, show myself, please. Now, this one, is this one a copy from the Stormwater Best Practices Manual?
Yes.
Okay, and how did you come to get this copy?
Uh, from the state website of state dot NJ dot US slash DEP Stormwater BMP Manual and NJ underscore SW BMP.
Not jumping ahead, but can you give one of these to Fran too, just in case this gets admitted?
Is that in on consent, Mr. Raymar?
No.
No? Wishful thinking?
Again, it's, it's irrelevant for all purposes. This talks about infiltration basins.
Put it this way, before, before he makes his argument about it, is, is there anything from this document that would make you think that the board can't take judicial notice of page nine point five dash one and page nine point five dash two of the New Jersey Stormwater Best Management Practices Manual?
I don't think the board can take judicial notice of an incomplete document by its own terms. This chapter nine, or nine point five goes on for more pages. What is the board supposed to make of two pages taken out of context? Even before we get to the relevance of the document.
You, you could fill that context in on summation if you felt it was necessary.
Why would I do that?
I don't know. That's, that's for you to decide.
This document doesn't stand by itself, it hasn't presented a genuine, complete document. Maybe if it were a genuine, complete document, we'd get over that hurdle, but it clearly isn't.
All right. Moving past the, for a moment, what's the proffer on the, on the relevance of this document?
The relevance is that, uh, the applicant has really two options, right?
But it is, what part of the document do you want to rely on? Are you relying on the definition? Are you relying on the purpose? Or are you relying on the conditions where the practice applies? Because those are the three items on these two pages, because after that, the design criterion starts, and you haven't photocopied all the design criteria.
No, the page two, which basically is consistent with Mary's concerns, that infiltration must not be used with the installation, would create a significant risk for basement seepage or flooding.
Do me a favor, point out to us, Mr. Raymar, come on up, point, just point without, point where this document is relying.
Yes, no, you text for breaks. All you do is text me break. Standard texting charges may apply.
No, I didn't text it.
No, I'm encouraging you.
He is, because otherwise, you can't just.
Mr. Bart, Mr. Buck, you should be.
Mr. Raymar?
You're not allowed.
Please be by, if you want that out in the record.
I can't swear to this, because I'm not an expert, but I think this is the system that then got revised, and it's not the current system. Moreover, it's, as Mr. Drill pointed out, incomplete, it refers to a, a, a diagram, which is not here, and it starts with design criteria as an A, usually when one does an A, one does a B, or a C, or a D, more than an A, that's not here. I don't know what to make of the document.
All right. Unlike the prior documents, this comes off an official state website.
Well, this is not necessarily off a website, but this is an official.
Oh, I'm sorry, is it a copy of his?
Publication.
Forgive me. It, it, I believe the, the witness testified that he got it off of.
Official state website.
State website, so.
Right, but, but the issue is, this is an official state publication, whether it's in a handbook or loosely for the website.
Complete or not, Mr. Raymar, you can see that that, the document referred to in, in the exhibit being offered is an official publication of the state of New Jersey?
It appears to be that.
Okay. Mr. Schley, do you, could, could you confirm that? As far as you know?
I didn't hear what the question was.
I, I, I retract it. It says, "New Jersey Stormwater Best Management Practices Manual." I don't know if this is put out by the DEP, or it's put out by some consultant who looks at the regulations and puts out a manual. Like, when we're lawyers, we have manuals and treatises that interpret the rules of federal conduct or a statute.
I understand. Versus it being official state policy, I understand. Mr. Banish, are you familiar with this document?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Drill just showed me a page that was, uh, submitted by Mr. Bart, that appears to be the BMP from the DEP website that I've reviewed in the past. I have seen that document, I'm familiar with it. I, I haven't seen the whole thing this evening.
Is that something that's published by the DEP?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Recommended best management practices for the design of stormwater management systems is essentially what it's about.
Okay. Relying upon that representation from Board Professional, Banish, I, I find that it is within our rules permissible for Mr. Bart to rely on it. Uh, the argument as to relevance is overruled, he can make the argument, it goes to weight, you can address the weight issues in your summation.
Okay, just for the record, what you're admitting as OB six are two pages. It's chapter nine point five, it's page nine point five dash one, page nine point five dash two from the New Jersey Stormwater Best Management Practices Manual, dated February two thousand and four. Fran, do you have one of these to mark?
Uh huh.
Because OB six was for ID, but this is gonna go in following, um, the board's practice, the next public exhibit going in would be P eight. So it's OB six for ID, but it's gonna go into evidence as P eight.
Okay, public, okay, I get it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, in, in summary here for this, Mr. Chairman, as it states here, that, um, and at, and at one time, um, the applicant said they were going to have a detention basin that was impervious, that has no permeability, and they went to infiltration that, with Mary's concerns, that would have significant risk of, for basement seepage. Um, so, under, neither case is this a drainage improvement, right? It's either impervious, which is not a drainage improvement, or it's a significant risk, risk for the neighbors, so. Well, the board took a straw poll, I ask when the board, uh, takes it again, that they, uh, they find it as not a drainage improvement, uh, as well as, um, finding as Mr. Khan had testified, that if they do go with the, uh, detention, uh, that is, uh, impervious, according to their testimony. It's not up, it's not up to us to say, tell them, uh, what the rules should be. I also ask you to check really with the professionals, I think Mr. Khan was incorrect when he talked about cutting the grass to prevent wetlands. Um, because if, uh, cutting the grass does not prevent the wetlands, which, that drainage swale, similar, if you create wetlands and then it, it, then it becomes, that does become a taking of Quixt's property. So that whole drainage system, um, the detention basin not being an improvement, as well as, um, I believe you should check that Mr. Khan's testimony was incorrect, that cutting the grass by itself will not prevent wetlands and a swell. He was not offered as a hydraulic engineer. Um, so, um, either it's a taking, uh, which would be against public policy as well.
Can you just, just explain what would constitute the taking?
If you create a wetlands, you are restricting Quixt's property. You're creating wetlands that don't exist. You don't, you don't agree with that?
I'm just asking for a clarification of what you just said. I'm just asking for a clarification of what you just said.
No, another matter that really is a health, health, safety risk, and this goes, and it was really goes to Ms. Alpers, and of course, without having any religious expert testimony in, in three years, all basically, all that other testimony being irrelevant, unfortunately, that where Nay talked about, it was probably said before, seventy, he thought seventy, some wild number, seventy percent would come to the, to the center from work and thirty percent from home, which, what he thought was only thirty percent would use the, the woo-woo, as compared to Khan talking about ninety-nine percent coming from home. Now, again, he wasn't, he wasn't a religious expert either, and that probably goes to Mary's concerns about the inconsistent testimony. And so there is something about the whole, the whole plot being misdesigned, because Mr. Khan, he said that they would have to design the pipes, and you're going to find wherever those pipes are, based upon the state standard of occupancy of their building. And without that, you can't even tell if any of the utilities here in this plot don't have to be redesigned, because if it's six hundred people, or five hundred people, according to the, whatever that division was, that need to do woo-woo, that clearly this facility is, is incorrectly designed. Now, I, I know this also, there's also, this, this, this application should be rejected because of the failed internal circulation plans. And just, I want to make one statement here about, and I think Mr. Drill said it was okay to disagree with his legal reasoning, about the definition of on-track and off-site. And I couldn't find it, I thought I had it a year ago, about where, where on-site is, and the applicant said that their deed goes to the center of the road, and that on-site is the section of Church Street where their deed goes to the road. And off-site truly would be outside that line. Hopefully that makes sense without drawings, all right? I mean, their plot, it comes into Church Street, I forget who's on the other side of the street, but, you know, the old deeds are, you own to the center of the road, and a lot of cases, and I think the, the board would tell you, of course, they're not going to give you a, a site plan approval unless you actually deed over that portion. And so therefore, if on-site and on-track is actually that section of Church Street that is right in front of the subject parcel, I think it was incorrect that no one could testify that they couldn't turn into that box, so to speak. Because it was Mr. Mr. Nay himself that said, if you had to wait over fifty seconds to get out of property, you had a failed level of service. And therefore, people should be able to tell you that they, turning into that, onto Church Street, that it took over fifty seconds for them, which would go to the fact that it's a failed traffic circulation. So, that's where I think that the, the advice was incorrect, and that is that Church Street, maybe the intersection down at the Memorial Triangle, not getting there, but that section in front of the subject property, people should have been able to testify about the traffic in front of their house on their side of Church Street. Now, we went back, as you talk about credibility, and one thing, of course, when Mary asked about the, what do you do with inconsistent testimony, as you know better than anyone, I'm, I'm sure, about, you give credibility, you, you can't give credibility to testimony. So it, it really gives you, I, I hope in summation, we get, we get a good summary here, because right now, with the inconsistent testimony, unqualified witnesses, what is one to conclude? And where, you may recall, Mr. Khan talked about how it was common sense to park in the fire lane. Janet Lake said it was against the law to park in the fire lane. Mr. Khan said it was common sense to have deliveries in the fire lane. Somebody else said it's against the law to use the fire lane for deliveries. I think it was Mr. Khan said, common sense, kids can text back and forth with parents when ready to take up school. Hey, you know what one of the worst motor vehicle infraction is? Texting while you're driving, right? And the applicant's going to actually offer that as a suggestion to be texting people while they're driving as a, a great traffic plan? So, obviously, they failed the traffic, traffic circulation. He said, would the county approve? The county wants, have shown that there's room for a bus, and it, it really is unclear whether this, how this handles a bus when you either lock the door so people can't get in. Now, I know Mr. Mr. Raymar was a real stickler for the English language, as he said, and it gets to this whole idea of a fire lane or fire lanes, right? You have, you have a fire lane in front of an entrance, but the ordinance says fire lanes, right? And it was Mr. Schley who said you could have more than two entrances. And again, we're, we're a little at a loss, because we haven't had any qualified religious experts to talk about, that's actually relevant, that actually shouldn't be stricken from the record, about what are the practices going in and out here. But one can only logically conclude with Mr. Schley's statement, that you can have more than one public entrance, and that in the ordinance, it talks about fire lanes, that the fire lanes are improperly designed on the subject property. Now, also as well, you talked about folks actually being, I, I think, subject to sitting here, listening to the various testimony, when, again, as Ms. Bellini had asked about what to do with inconsistent testimony. And part of that is, I mean, Mr. Drill himself, on November twenty-eighth, said to Mr. Chorger, you can't whisper to a witness when he's answering, it's inappropriate. It only gives you inconsistent testimony, right? Mr. Orr, on February fifth, two thousand thirteen, he says, Mr. Chorger is whispering, he's not testifying, Mr. Buzanu. Mr. Mr., it's either Mr. Plaza or Mr. Drill on September thirteenth, two thousand fourteen. Mr. Khan, you can't look to Mr. Raymar, you need to answer the question. So, so those all, they all, they all add up to, you know, the fact that the, the testimony is unreliable, and that one, you know, what can one believe? And so with that, Mr. Mr. Plaza, Mr. Chairman, there is one minutes. I don't know if you want to make motion, a motion to correct the minutes, or submit that in writing?
Good. Is that the conclusion of your other arguments, or is this a final matter?
Pretty much so. Would you, would you accept if I just write in, if I have to amend any minutes?
Yeah, because the minutes, just because they pertain to this particular application, that the board has corrected minutes in the past, not very often. So if you think minutes are wrong, send it in. That's, that doesn't have to, to do with the deliberation in this case.
Okay.
But if you're going to be referring to a specific portion of a, of a proceeding of an evening?
Try to give us the clip, just like.
Yeah, I'll send it, I got it.
Or if, if, if nothing else, give us the timing of it, how deep into the meeting, so we can find it, okay?
So, I mean, in conclusion, because, Mr. Chairman, there's been a lot said about, and one reason, I, I think really the board needs to deny this, because there's one thing that's been said about, you know, the, the town basically monitoring, monitoring activity, which is very dangerous. I mean, even the New Jersey Supreme Court in eighty-six, what's it, Marcell versus Wernick, eighty-six NJ two thirty-two in nineteen eighty-one, talked about the danger of continuing official surveillance of religious persons or entities. So therefore, the town should not be put in a position of, of being asked to, to do such. So, with, with that, Mr. Chairman, the, with insufficient evidence, insufficient proof, there's no reason to approve this application, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bart. Before you go away, any, any cross, any questions or cross?
No.
Okay. All right. Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Bart.
Does any board ever need a break before going to the next round?
Okay, so we're going to take, we're going to take a five minute break.
Okay, we're back on the record. We're going to be continuing with public comment. Someone indicated to me during the break that they cannot be here at the next meeting, and that's, you know, this time of year, that's obviously an important consideration. Is there anyone else due to vacation plans or other reasons that can't be here on August 4? If I show hands, okay, sir. Okay, and that's the Martinsons back there.
Someone on the right there.
Somebody else over here?
Yes.
Okay, so in order of acknowledgement, we're going to do Mr. and Mrs. Martinson, and this gentleman, and the lady over there, okay, so we're going to try to get everybody in. So, Mr. Martinson, if you could come up. And just like everyone else, you put your name and address on the pad, and you'll still be there, and then when you're done with that, Mr. Drill will swear you in.
There was a piece of paper there.
Okay, who has the pad for the paper?
Mr. Bart, you took the piece of paper?
Mr. Bart, did you take confiscate?
It was just a single piece, so it might have gotten co-mingled.
Martinson.
Lloyd Martinson.
Lloyd Martinson.
We will start anew.
We'll start anew.
Well, he's signing it. Mr. Bart, you were the only one to sign the other sheet. Then it disappeared. Isn't that correct?
That doesn't mean. There's a lot of people I saw walk by.
But, Mr. Bart, that is an excellent example of circumstantial evidence.
Can you identify yourself for the record, please?
Lloyd Martinson.
Can you spell your last name?
M.A.R.T.I.N.S.O.N.
Okay, and your address?
Four Carriage Way.
Okay, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear the comments and testimony that you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you guide?
I do. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to make public comments on the application. I am opposed to the application, and I have three primary reasons why that is the case. First of all, its most negative impact that it has on the neighborhood surrounding the property. Secondly, to the negative impact it has on to the township as a whole, but particularly the Liberty Corner area. And then finally, I'm opposed because I believe it is really one of the most inappropriate sites that we selected, and I believe that there could have been a lot of other more appropriate sites found if the effort had been made. I've learned a lot by coming to the meetings, and probably the biggest thing that I've learned is this, is just hearing all the other testimony over the months by the people who are in, who live in the surrounding neighborhood. That their testimony has given me a much better understanding of how negatively this affects them. And a lot of them have already come forward. They voiced opposition. I believe it is not right what is happening to them. When one buys a home, you do not expect that the single-family home adjacent to it will be replaced by a house of worship with over 100 parking spots and with many services throughout the week. That, I believe, is an understatement, and is just obvious to everyone. I also, I join the many other residents who have already come forward in support, in support of these people who are so directly affected by this. All any one of us has to do is imagine being in their homes, in their situations, to feel great sympathy and to realize very quickly how misguided this proposed project is. That mere fact in and of itself is enough for me to strongly oppose it and to ask the board to do the same to protect the rights of these homeowners. The second point is about the impact it has to Liberty Corner as a whole. Again, there's been a lot of testimony about that. I'm not going to repeat it all. But overall, I have learned a lot just by coming to the meetings about that I believe that this proposal has a very negative impact on the local area, the preservation of the township, and that it's counter to what I believe that not only myself, but a lot of people in town want, which is a limit of the use of heavy-use development such as this, and including and especially in historical area like Liberty Corner. I've understood a lot more about what the planning board, its role in trying to do this mission, to try to accomplish this mission. And I know that a lot of work has already been done to try to preserve the rural character and the historic nature of the township by the planning board, and particularly in Liberty Corner. One example is the Mance proposal by the Liberty Corner Presbyterian Church and the opposition to that. I also understand, I've come to understand how the planning board in the town has secured the development rights at presumably a heavy cost to many acres of the English Farm tract. I believe this is a very impressive act towards that goal of really trying to preserve the township. I also understand that the master plan that was developed in 2010 was done by the, under the direction of the board and adopted by the board. And what I wonder is, what was the purpose of this master plan, which makes such of an effort to guide the decisions of this board on proposed development and for decisions like this? To me, just even having a very cursory look at this over 200-page document shows that this proposal that is before the board goes in the opposite direction of what that master plan is trying to do. Again, a very cursory look. All you have to do is go to page two of that on the web. Page two of that very long document, I'm just going to read from it. Under the section, on, it's actually the second page, but the page number is 13. Under the section "Land Use and Management Objectives", it states, "The following land use objectives serve to guide the master plan." Colon. And it gives five objectives. Number one, "Land use policies should strive to maintain and enhance community character, protect the integrity of existing neighborhoods, and prevent the intrusion of incompatible new development." That, to me, is the, again, this, the proposal goes 180 degrees in the opposite direction, very hard against that very objective. And I wonder, have people gone through the master plan in detail to see in what other ways is this really just going against what was laid out in 2010? That's just reading the plan, and then there's just your general observation that I would think a lot of people in town share. As you drive by the location on 124 Church Street, and I've done that, we've been residents for 14 years, and you just, you just see house after house after house after house. And then you just imagine house, you know, single-family home, single-family home. Much larger structure, 100-plus parking spaces, services multiple times throughout the day. House, house, house. Of course, that's going to just greatly change the character of the area in Liberty Corner. How did we get to where we are? It seems like the scope just grew and grew over the years from being something small to something bigger and bigger that, as prior testimony has said, it just doesn't seem to fit. One thing we're certainly concerned about is traffic. Now, the issue is not the traffic on Church Street, which has been unfortunately passed on to another body. But that being put aside, traffic throughout the township. There's other streets other than Church Street that need to be considered. And I actually haven't heard anything about this. We live on one of those streets or right in that same neighborhood. What I realize is that, and most people realize that anyone coming off of 287, they want to get to this location from the Mount Airy Road exit on 287, often is going to want to find a shortcut after just a few tries instead of coming down Mount Airy to Lyons, to Church Street. And they will cut through neighborhoods like Canterbury and Stockmar and Tuxford and Old Coach and Mybrook. This happens all the time. Anyone who's familiar with the area knows this is exactly the way people will go. You can be in our neighborhood and see teachers from Allbrook School or whatever coming in that way, and you see people working in that area, going to that area of town. It will just naturally happen. And so I was wondering, I'm opposed to it based even on just the traffic effect that it could have. But overall, just the direct opposition that it has to the preserving of the township. And then my last opposition is based upon that I really believe that it's, I don't know how we got to where we are with this, but it seems to be just about the most inappropriate place you could put a facility like that. And there's plenty of other places that you could look at. I don't know if it's just, it's gone so far and just grew from something else. I don't know the reasons why this is, this site was decided upon, but it just seems to me, just objectively, to be just a very big mistake. Partly that's based upon my own experience. Not only have I been involved in a few different times with the potential selection of a school site and realizing what goes into that. And you would never consider putting a school, for example, right in a neighborhood. But also, just more recent experience during the same parallel time that this has been, been being considered and proposed in my own company. I, I'm not only a resident, I own a company, an IT consulting company, with about 125 consultants. And we have an office, our primary office, that the people our consultants work with, which is about 20 people, is in Berners Township. Originally, several years ago, we, it was a satellite office in Berners Township. Then our main office was in Springfield. And our satellite office was very small with about six people and a building actually on Church Street next to Crowzer's. When we, even the occupation of that facility as an office, you know, there's a lot of things that we knew that we had to do to make the town be pleased with the fact that we weren't intruding upon the historical nature of Liberty Corner and adding traffic and all that. We wanted to know about what our business was there, just a few of us, you know, about visitors that we might have. This is very, all very appropriate, but it almost seems comical when I look at the fact that this proposal is under serious consideration, given the tremendous negative effect it will have in these areas. The, what we ended up doing was when we decided to combine our Springfield office and our Basking Ridge office into a single location in Berners Township. Well, I'll tell you what we did not do. We did not go into a neighborhood and attempt to convert a house to a commercial building, even if there had been such a loophole for something like that to be considered. For one thing, it would be obvious to us that would create strong opposition by the neighbors in the community. And it wouldn't be opposition to the mission of our company. It would be in opposition to how we would be misusing a residential property in a residential neighborhood and causing havoc in the neighborhood. I, I don't consider our decision to not go down that path as any way virtuous. It would just simply be counter to the goal of getting set up quickly in a suitable location without passes, which I see this proposal even going out for many years. So instead, all we did several years ago is look at a variety of sites in the area. The economy has been slow. It's been great for people looking for space. We, we had many options, and we decided between two sites, both one off the Burnerville exit of 287 and the other off of the Mount Airy Road exit of 287. So we chose the one off the Mount Airy Road exit across from.
My apologies, Mr. Martinson. You need to bring that up just a little bit more. Thank you.
Sure, okay. So we chose the Mount Airy Road exit location and moved in a few years ago after building out the office. Well, we're a small office, around about 20 people. But during that same time, I saw other organizations and facilities securing space or having just secured space in similar locations. The, just for example, there was the Montgomery Academy, which has, I believe, about 90 students.
I mean, it's gone far afield for a long time, but at least he was talking about his own personal experiences. And now he's talking about Montgomery Academy, which I don't know that he's a member of or an owner of.
Were you directly involved in that property search, or are you just citing that by way of example?
I'm citing by way of example.
So then, as to that, the objection is to state at that point the threat has been pulled too thin as to its relationship to this application.
Okay. So, there's been plenty of time, basically, for other sites to be looked at that we saw that would have been potentially appropriate for larger organizations and efforts. But instead, the, and the other thing is, the site that we chose is right off an exit. It's not in anyone's neighborhood. There's no traffic issues. There, and I don't understand why the focus has not been getting a site that has been more appropriate. And if I had found ourselves considering a residential property in a residential neighborhood, and again, if there's some sort of loophole, I would think that we'd be crazy to be considering that because what would actually happen would be, what's happened here. A lot of people would be opposing it. There'd be signs all over the place. There'd be hearings in front of the planning board. And we would expect full opposition, not because, in opposition to an IT staffing firm or what we're doing, but just because of how it was a misuse, an inappropriate land use. And this is for us who have, we have no ties to the community other than some of our employees live in town. Our, by and large, our clients are around the country. It's puzzling to me why something that's trying to be part of the community, and is part of the community, and having ties to the direct local community that it cares about, would go against that goal of keeping those ties strong and just starting off in this way. In, in the master plan.
I object.
The witness is now repeating himself, and the obvious answer to everything he said is it's a permitted use at this site. And repeated references to the master plan and to everything else that he's going into don't change the fact that it's a permitted use at this site. It's now redundant and a filibuster.
Are you citing to a different section of the master plan?
Yes.
What section did you want to cite to?
I have one more quote from the master plan in page 146, conservation.
Objection's overruled. It can go to weight, but it's the master plan. I don't see how we couldn't possibly rely on the master plan in making an argument to the board concerning an application, so proceed. Any motion? Okay, please just.
So, on page 146, "The following master plan goals and objectives are directly relevant to the conservation and open space plan." Number one, "To promote and encourage social comity." And that means, I looked that up, "It's courtesy and considerate behavior toward others, civic responsibility and neighborliness," which are key quality of life indicators in Berners. And as I say, even that aspect of it, where it's not thinking of the concerns of the neighbors, to me says that goes against the master plan in and of itself. So in conclusion, I believe that there have been other sites that would have been far better, and that the application shouldn't really have happened, shouldn't have come this far. And I asked the board to reject the proposal and to find, and to protect both the township, Liberty Corner, and the rights of the neighbors. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Martinson. Any questions from the board? Any cross-examination?
No.
All right, seeing none. Thank you, sir. You're excused. Ms. Martinson, if you want to come up.
Now you took the paper. You took the paper?
Not me.
He recovered it.
Recovered from his bar.
I have a choice.
Can you state your name for the record?
Katie Martinson.
It's K. Katie?
Katie, K.A.T.I.E.
Okay, can you raise your right hand?
Yes.
You swear the comments and testimony you're going to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you guide?
I do.
Probably know your address, but you're.
It's for Carriage Way. I just have a short point to illuminate what Lloyd was saying about the traffic issue through our own neighborhood. I have an exhibit that I think would help people see what I'm talking about. Am I allowed to pass that out? It's a map.
I understand. Let's hear what the objection is first.
Traffic on Carriage Way has nothing to do with this site and necessarily gets the traffic on the county road, which is the only way you enter or exit our site.
That objection is sustained only because the prior decisions of the board relative to its jurisdiction in this matter relate only to the the site itself, which not only does it 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 doesn't include traffic on Church Street, so it doesn't therefore extend the street even beyond that. So unfortunately, that line of testimony isn't permitted.
The objection that I have to the application is based on maintaining the character of the neighborhood, and when we moved in to our home in 2002, a very important part of our decision was the is this a busy neighborhood? Is this a neighborhood that safe for our children to ride their bikes, cross the street, play outside, get over to the park? And therefore, I think that the additional cars that we've coming through our own neighborhood, which is not a county road, actually is very relevant to this application.
Mr. Joe.
So the traffic is twofold. The reason, there were two issues. One is that it was a county road, so the county had jurisdiction over church. But the other part of it was that because the use is permitted, the cases say increase in traffic on any roads is irrelevant. That's what the cases say. So I I understand that there could be an adverse impact on more traffic on your street, although you would need a witness to actually testify to that. But even if there was one, the cases say because this use is permitted, there's nothing that the board cannot consider that. And the board gave a lot of leeway, and they let your husband, for example, cite the master plan and all that. But if the master plan suggests A, and the ordinance says X, this board has to follow the ordinance. So master plan is a planning document, and the ordinance is the implementation document. And basically, what you can see has happened here is that the ordinance was changed after the application was filed, and prior to 2011, the board would have followed the new ordinance, which made this conditionally permitted instead of principally permitted. But in 2011, the legislature adopted a law, and the governor signed it, called the Time of Application Law. And what that law said, which the board has to sign, all these members are taking an oath of office, they're going to follow the laws of the state of New Jersey and the Constitution, and it said that if the ordinance is changed during an application, the ordinance in effect at the time the application was filed governs. So they, whether the board likes it or not, whether anyone likes it or not, the board has no choice but to follow the ordinance that was in effect at the time. And that means increased traffic on any streets, whether it's a county street or any other street, cannot be considered by the board. If they do, and they were to deny the application on that basis, in my opinion, they would get reversed. That's my opinion to the board.
Well, I I'll have to defer that. I'm not an attorney, so I don't have any basis of recusing that. But it seems to me common sense that 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 is something that affects.
I will tell you this. Sometimes land use and zoning is common sense. Sometimes it's not always common sense, is all I'm going to say.
Okay. Thank you.
Sir.
Can you state your name?
Yes, it's Nadine Ahmed.
Can you spell both the first and second name?
Nadine, N-A-D-I-M, for Mary. Ahmed, A-H-M-E-D. And I live at 102 Independence Drive in the hills.
And can you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony that you're going to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you guide?
I do. So first of all, thank you very much for the opportunity to allow me to make comment. Secondly, for also providing that opportunity for my kids to see democracy in action. So whichever side of the debate you're on, I think it's a great opportunity for the kids in the community to be able to see democracy in action. My comments are going to be in favor of the planned application, and I do understand that the decision in front of the board is a very difficult one with lots of emotions on both sides of this debate. However, I would encourage the members of the board to continue to focus, as you have been, on the scope and the remit of your specific responsibilities as they pertain to the context of zoning ordinance, including permitted use of the application. I would also encourage the board to discern facts versus conjecture. Google does not make one an expert, either an attorney or an engineer or a religious expert, for that matter. For example, we've heard public comments in prior meetings on the issue of shoes and the placement thereof in a mosque. Again, Google does not make one an Islamic scholar, nor qualified to discern the finer points of Islamic jurisprudence, just as one cannot become a doctor by reading a medical textbook. Secondly, the main issue, and again, my comments are not going to be comments as an expert, but as a Muslim that practices his faith. So you can make your assessments based on my commentary. The main issue related to shoes in a mosque, as any Muslim Muslim will tell you, is that there is a requirement to remove one's shoes when one prays. That's it. It's not much more complicated than that. The placement of the shoes, in my opinion, and my opinion only, based on the site plan, I think there's opportunity to place the shoes elsewhere in the prayer area, as long as the shoes are not on the carpeted area, which is the area designated for prayers. We also heard testimony in prior meetings on the issue of compact cars and how people in Basking Ridge don't drive around in Mini Coopers, right? This actually isn't an accurate assertion, as many of today's most popular cars are, in fact, compact cars, such as the Honda Civic, the Mazda 3, the Ford Focus, Volkswagen Jetta, Nissan Sentra, to name a few. I personally own and drive a Honda Civic and Mazda 3, and I also live in Basking Ridge. We also heard about parking spaces previously and also earlier today. I was actually encouraged to hear that the effective parking space in a parking spot isn't necessarily the distance from the wheel stop to the back of that parking spot, because there was a lot of discussion about the overhang beyond the wheel stop. It's called a wheel stop because it stops the wheels. So I think in any assessment of effective parking spaces, that should be considered, and in fact was mentioned in one of the comments today. There have also been many, many comments regarding parking volume, with the implication that 107 cars would be parked in the parking lot five times a day, every day. I would just like to clarify that Muslims do not have to attend the mosque for the five daily prayers. I personally offer my own prayers in my office and sometimes at home. A few people may choose to attend the mosque for some of their daily prayers, but based, again, my personal experience, this will be a very small number. The peak time will be the Friday prayers, though Muslims generally tend to congregate in the mosque, just as our Christian brethren gather in churches on Sundays. There was also commentary made previously and today, in public testimony, that it's important to preserve the historic nature of the area and how, in fact, the community in the past did not support the building of a new residence for the Minister of the Presbyterian Church. However, I would like to point out that I don't believe this is an apples versus apples comparison. The proposed application from the church included tearing down a historic building within the historic district of Liberty Corner. The proposed mosque is neither in the historic district, nor is it a historical building. On the topic of history, today will become history tomorrow. Similarly, the first mosque in Basking Ridge, if approved, will become history in the future, just as the opening of the first synagogue in Basking Ridge was a historic milestone over 25 years ago. There was much said about religious expert testimony over the past several years. A religious expert or an imam is there to serve the spiritual needs of the community. That person is not a traffic engineer. That person does not determine the occupancy of a mosque. So I would assert that conflating the role of the religious expert or imam is not appropriate in this case. They're there to serve the spiritual needs of the community, instruct the community on the rites of worship. So again, I want to make sure that we continue to discern facts versus conjecture. I will conclude by finish by finishing where I started, and that is to urge the members of the board to pass out emotion and conjecture and continue, as you have been, to base your decision purely on the scope and the remit of the board as defined by the applicable zoning ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ahmed. Any questions from the board? Any cross-examination?
No.
Seeing none, you thank you, sir. You're excused. And then, ma'am, you were next. Well, you're putting your name. Is there anyone else that can't be here on the August 4 meeting? We're trying to get people that are going to be away on vacation. We got somebody back there. Anyone else? Show hands. Okay, sir, you'll be next.
Did you sign up yet? Just put your name and address on the on one of the two sheets.
I'm sorry, prior to making my statement? Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
Could you state your name for the record?
Shirley. My name is Kathleen Hothersall.
Can you spell that last name slowly?
Shirley, H.O.T.H.E.R.S.A.L.L.
Okay, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony and comments that you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you guide?
I do.
Can you state your address?
Shirley. I live at 45 Winding Lane. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thank you for your consideration of my statement. I'll be very brief. I my family has lived at 45 Winding Lane. It'll be 51 years this August. So we have very, very deep roots in this community, and my family also has even deeper roots in this nation. In addition to having lived in Basking Ridge for 51 years, I'm also a daughter of the American Revolution. I have an ancestor named Abraham Clark from New Jersey, who who's one of the 56 brave and noble men who risked their lives to sign the Declaration of Independence on July 4, 1776, asserting our nation's independence from Britain. 13 years later, a nation was born unlike any that the world had ever seen in its 10,000-year history of of human civilization. For the first time, a nation existed that held itself evident that its citizens had the right to freedom of worship and that this included all citizens, all citizens, not just those who agreed with the nation's sovereign. They bestowed upon us a heritage in this respect that was precious, noble, and sacred, one that has served us very well through the decades and centuries. We owe them a debt that we can never repay, however, never in full. But we can partially repay it by remembering it, honoring it, and carrying it forward, especially those who hold positions of public service. I urge you to remember this and to honor the rights of all Americans within your jurisdiction to freedom of worship to the best of your ability and not to resort to such practices as the creative use of legislation or ordinances as an end run around the Constitution and a way out of observing those rights by interfering with the construction of a house of worship. In my opinion, a mosque could be an asset and not a liability to the community and would contribute to its cultural and spiritual character and not detract from it. I urge you to approve its construction and to allow it to be expedited. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, again.
Thank you. This is Hotterfall. Any questions from the board? Any cross-examination?
No.
Okay, seeing none, thank you. You're excused. All right, sir.
Peter Fitzpatrick, 277 Mount Prospect Road. Can you raise your right hand?
Yes, sir.
Do you swear that the comment and testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you guide?
I do.
You can either you can either take that mic out of there or leave it in the stand if you like, Elvis. First of all, I'd like to thank. First of all, I'd like to thank the planning board for all your service and your time on this issue. It's been a long, long journey for all of us. My comments are basically this. I feel that the planning board has shown great deference to the ISBR. I think that they've shown more deference to them than to us, the residents. Even though this is a planning board, this has essentially become Mr. Ray Moore's courtroom and playground. He's consistently tried to render any expert witness put forth by us, the residents, as net opinion and shocking as irrelevant, while his witness, the traffic expert or jack-of-all-trades, Mr. Khan, when asked, could not even answer the most basic of traffic questions. Many of his answers came back as "I'm not sure" or "I don't know" at this time. He actually said that the fire lane could be used for deliveries. Then Mr. Simon asked how often he had testified as a traffic expert, and his reply was "once or twice in the last fifteen years." Really? The same witness, Mr. Khan, was also the engineer on this project, and in that capacity, he dropped the ball too many times to be mentioned. Then there's the fact that this house of worship is proposed right across the street from the Liberty Corner Firehouse, which services three-quarters of the town. The fire officials said that they are not comfortable with the layout of this building or application, and that they would be remiss from bringing one or two of their fire trucks onto the property in case of an emergency. They also stated that they would not be comfortable with cars parked along the road and the street in case, you know, there was another fire somewhere else in the town. Do we really think that permitted use, that a permitted use ordinance should override the safety of all our towns, residents, and the neighbors just to appease one applicant? One of the conditions of this permitted use ordinance was a required three-acre parcel. There are wetlands on this property, and the usage and the acreage, the usage of the acreage is much smaller than three acres. One of the great questions asked by the board was, does this ordinance specifically say a usable three acres? No, the ordinance doesn't say the word "usable." Unfortunately, that would mean we would have to use common sense and good judgment. But in our litigious society, common sense means nothing. The parsing of words means everything, and determining whether a capital letter means one thing or a lowercase letter means something else. Come on, guys, this is all wordsmithing. If you look around this room, ladies and gentlemen, these last three years, you will see many towns, residents. We are black, we are brown, we are Indian and Asian, we're Catholic, Protestant, Jewish, Mormon, Hindu, and Buddhist. This is not and never was about religious intolerance. This is about preferential treatment. While our signs to preserve Liberty Corner have been stolen from our lawns numerous times over these last three years, we see a Bernard's Township police officer stationed in the ISBR driveway. What's the message? Who's paying for that expense, and who's been given special treatment? I'd love to have that cop in my driveway, my signs might still be there. All the residents of this town want is for you, the board, to do your job. This application needs to be looked at for what it is. It's a high-usage, oversized house of worship in the middle of a historic district and across the street from our town's busy fire department in the wetlands, and then smushed between modest homes, homes that will have no escape from noise, traffic, and loss of privacy. We ask you to do the right thing by the town and by its residents and deny this application. You have the grounds to deny it because safety is relevant, wetlands are relevant, the common good is relevant, easements are relevant, buffer zones are relevant, lights and noise are relevant, and the residents of this town are relevant.
Thank you. Joe, you gotta hold up. Any questions from the board? Any cross-exam?
Cross-examination?
No. Anyone else not going to be here on the fourth?
There is someone on there.
Hi, Christina Ehret, 56 Peachtree Road.
Can you just spell your last name?
E-H-R-E-T.
Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear the comments and testimony that you're going to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you guide?
Yes. I've stood in this room several times on a different issue. It was traffic into the high school in front of a different org, and it was ruled that the traffic could not be utilized, could not go through the municipal building because there were concerns, township committee had concerns that it would impact the response time for the police officers who were in the municipal building. And it was deemed that another alternative had to be made, and another alternative was made, and here we are with a completely different traffic pattern. So I just, I don't understand how a township committee can make a rule about response time and not allow residents to utilize a municipal building because traffic is an issue, but if traffic is an issue in another area where there's response time from the Liberty Corner Fire Department, how that is not a reason why this cannot be done?
Wait, don't go away. Anybody, any questions from the board? Board professionals, any cross-exam? Thank you, ma'am, you're excused. Okay. This gentleman's making his way up. I just want to make sure, anybody that's not going to be here because of vacation next meeting, we're trying to get everybody in that wouldn't be here because of vacation. No, no, that's, you're fine. No, that's okay, but anyone else? Okay, so now we're just gonna go as if... Just, so the record reflects, there was no further show of hands by anyone that can't be here at the next meeting on August 4 to travel or other plans.
My name is Doug Watson, Douglas Watson, 52 Liberty Corner Road.
Okay, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony and comments that you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you guide?
I do.
And I can tell you're gonna have to talk louder.
I do. I've rarely been accused of not talking loud. So first of all, to gentlemen, I'm not a lawyer. I'm not represented by a lawyer. I do not need one. I'm here simply to express my opinion and my wife's opinion and to give my public comment as this board has requested. I want to thank the last speaker, actually, because that was a very calm and helpful presentation, and in fairness, taught me some things which perhaps I didn't know, maybe I should have done. And that really reemphasizes that I'm absolutely, unaccountably not, an expert in Muslim-worshipping practices, which I know was part of a discussion at an earlier meeting. I am sort of an expert in corporate leadership, but that's irrelevant, and I've had many years of experience on boards of small foundations, be they hospitals, rehabilitation centers, health foundations. I understand the challenges that are faced by not-for-profits in trying to move forward.
My apologies. You're getting feedback. If it isn't one thing, it isn't the other, so you need to be a little bit further away, but the feedback is gonna be just as hard to hear on the recording, so if you could...
Take a step back from that microphone, and then continue, then you'll be fine.
Thank you, my apologies.
No, that's all right. You just hear my opinion twice, which makes it twice as good, right? So absolutely, I respect the Muslim faith, and indeed, all faiths, and I wish them nothing but the best. But I want them to integrate into our community. If they truly respect our community, they will listen to what we, the public, are saying. In full disclosure, this is not the first time that I presented to a township planning committee. Many years ago, a different religious group, if memory serves me right, it was the Grace Fellowship Church, had an application before this board, and they wanted to convert a house down Liberty Corner Road into a church facility. They argued it was an approved use, and they planned to build a large car park with lighting. Sound familiar? We, the local community, opposed that project. In this occasion, the church listened. They withdrew the proposal and bought property out of town in a more secluded area. After all, the congregants, very few congregants walk to church these days, or temple, or mosques in a community like this. So whether it's in the center of town or the outskirts of town really is irrelevant. This application proceeding has been going on for four years. What does that say to the applicants? It says we've got a very patient board, that's true, but are they listening? I think not. My personal experience, my wife and I have lived in Scotland, in England, in Switzerland, and in sunny Berners Township, New Jersey. They're all different. They have different cultures, they have different languages, even drive on different sides of the road. They are all wonderful communities to live in. My wife and I adapted to the respective communities and the respective cultures. The appropriate strategy, I would argue, for anyone moving into a community is to assimilate into that local society without unduly impacting the character of the community. Liberty Corner is a historic village, and that's why we chose to live here. We like it here, we like it the way it is. Assimilation means that one tries to minimize the impact on that community. Live in it, enjoy it, but try to minimize your changes to it. For the record, at this location on Church Street, even if this was a proposed Scottish Presbyterian church with daily services accompanied by a bike-pipe band, with fish-and-chip suppers on Friday and Saturday evening, I would vote against it. It has nothing to do with the religion itself. It's the use of the property and the occupancy and the traffic and everything else around. The gentleman on my left keeps reminding us it is a permitted use. Okay, a restaurant is permitted use in the center of Basking Ridge, but I wonder how this board would react if McDonald's came with flashing lights for an application in the center of Basking Ridge. It's irrelevant, I know. The board has to give consideration to the overall impact on our community. We're not allowed to use the T-word in this conversation, but health and safety is a huge concern, as discussed by many of the presenters before, and I respect the arguments about fire access, et cetera. I wonder what will happen to the value of our houses in this immediate area. One might look at similar experiences in other communities around here, and I suppose the good news is that my real estate taxes will probably go down. Any religious establishment will attract members of the faith to this area. I respect any new religious establishment, beg your pardon, will attract members of the faith to this area, that's good. I respect the character of the people currently requesting this construction, but I worry about the future congregants that will come and how they will behave.
That's completely out of line, and it's not relevant to this application.
It may not be, but do you want my public comment or not?
It's both irrelevant, it's also speculative.
Okay. I withdraw the last sentence. We already see some strange aberrant behavior from supporters. Removal of signs from private property, I believe that was a fact.
I object. That's, that's complete speculation. There's no evidence in the record on that.
Sustained.
There are people accusing those with signs as being Islamophobic. How can we believe people who behave like that are gonna live up to the commitments they make with the board?
I object. That's completely...
When you object, you have no choice but to stop.
That's completely out of line.
I don't have to stop my testimony, I've stopped until the point...
You do, no, after he makes an objection, because then we have to rule on the objection before you proceed. I didn't get the basis...
I objected, I said it's completely out of line and totally speculative.
Sustained as speculative.
I withdraw. Let's have the courage of our community to say no. There are plenty of land properties available in the more rural areas. The board should not be granting variances for this lot. Comply with the town planning guidelines, fire access codes, ground coverage, retention basins, culvers, drainage, whatever, no variances. And finally, may I strongly request that this board retain the final say. Let's postpone a final decision until after the fire safety and county road issues are resolved or not resolved by another institution. Let's keep it in the town, let's keep it at the state. As an annual speaker said, this will end up in court, and I don't want to be part of the plaintiffs of that. Last but not least, I truly, truly thank each and every one of you for the time and effort and the candor and patience you've had with me and other people who testified today and in Fridays. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Any questions from the board? Any cross-exam?
Any cross-exam?
No. Okay, thank you, sir. You're excused. Any other member of the public wishing to be heard, come forward.
My name's Zheng, sorry, legal name, I don't want to use my nickname.
Ma'am, you remember to write your name down?
My name's Zheng Zhang, last name spelled as Z-H-A-N-G.
Ma'am, I really would appreciate it if you could write that on the piece of paper there.
And while you're doing that, can you spell your first name and that spelling of your last name?
Z-H-E-N. And I live at 3 Wellington Drive, Basking Ridge.
Okay, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony and comments that you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you guide?
Yes, I do. I oppose the application. I wonder how many people who support the application live next to 124 Church Street and have imagined that the mosque is to be built in your backyard. Would you like to trade your house with the house next to 124 Church Street at the current market value? That's the end.
Thank you, don't run away. Any questions? Any cross? Okay, thank you very much. Any other members? Yes, sir.
Could you please give us your name?
Frank Zhao, Z-H-A-O, 50 Outer.
What's your address again?
50 Outer Lane.
Right, right, and do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you guide?
I do. First of all, I'd like to thank the board members and also the public that has been spent so many times coming to this hearing. It's been almost over three years, right? Twenty-four and counting. And I would like to, you know, even though I was not living, I'm not living in the kind of close adjacency to the proposed building site, but after many times of attending the hearing, I feel as a resident, I feel, I mean, feel my, you know, be responsible to speak out what I feel about. Through many of the hearings and also through the public comments, we are kind of limited to the ordinance relevancy of this building code, right? Building plan. But I think as a public, we live here, we breathe here, we should be allowed to express some of our feelings as well as... to express some of our feelings, as well as, uh, you know, subjective to those ordinance and master plan. The use of the land has profound impact on the characteristic environment and other important aspect of the matter. The use of land should, in accordance, accordance with the principle outlined in the township master plan, and also in conjunction with the ordinance. Uh, number one, the public welfare and the well-being of the neighborhoods. In the master plan, in the general objective section, there are list, uh, fifteen items. The first one, I think, presumably is the very important one, the most important one, is to encourage municipal action to guide appropriate use or development of all lands in this state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. Also, this is also written in the town ordinance, section twenty-first, twenty-one, about the land use.
Twenty-one dash...
Twenty-one dash one-point-one purpose.
So you're reading one of the purposes of the ordinance?
Right.
Okay.
I think, uh, in this particular land use, uh, section... Uh, I just read the one, one, uh, section of this, uh, providing maximum protection of the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare in accordance with the provisions and of the NJSA forty, uh, colon fifty-five D dash two, through the full exercise, through the, through the full exercise of the land use management powers available to the township. So I think the paramount of this board, you should consider this as the most important aspect of any land use regarding the public safety and well-being. The number five item of general objections in the master plan, uh, says, ensures to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of the persons, neighbors, communities, and regions, and preserve, and preservation of the environment. The major reason for separating the land use for commercial and residential is that, uh, besides the preserving, the nature, the, uh, nature surrounding and environment, and protecting the habitant, it is the traffic congestion, pedestrian safety, security, and air and noise pollution that adversely affect the public's safety, uh, health, moral, and general well-being. In the surrounding neighborhood, the proposed use in this property, even in the, even in the residential zone area, will yield more traffics in and out, uh, and more condensed use than some of the business in the commercial zoning area. Here are some reasons. Uh, in the recent Friday, well, actually, that was in March, uh, Friday afternoon, or Friday noon time, uh, more than eighty people were observed entering two houses in the Baskin Ridge Community Center, which I think they have the, their Friday, uh, noon prayer, for a total capacity of eighty of those two buildings. Uh, there are coming in around sixty cars, that includes cars, vans, and SUVs, not just those many Coopers. Though majority of the people respected safety precaution, driving slowly into the parking lot, but some rushed into the parking lot with unsafe, with unsafe speed.
Objection.
And through the, through the observation, this is about safety.
Objection, if you're any objection, you have to wait.
Okay.
Unless he has a speed camera, unless he has a police report, then he, he is talking about ambiguities and speculative actions.
Did you personally observe this?
Yes, I do.
What's your belief as to who you were observing?
Well, I, I observed unsafe behavior.
No, no, but the, the people using the community center, who, who were them?
No, those are the people coming for the Friday prayer, and entered in those two buildings.
It's your testimony that you were observing members of the ISBR using the community center?
Yes, I did.
Then, if it's his personal observations, he can testify to it, you know, uh, I assume your next argument would be relevance, but if he personally observed that these are the actual congregants of the applicant, uh, he has the right to make the argument that driving behavior in that parking lot might be replicated on the site parking lot if approved, it goes to wait, but allowed. And, and as to, he doesn't need a radar gun, he's, you, you know that people are permitted to give their, uh, opinions as to such things as the rate of speed of a vehicle based on their general experiences as licensed drivers, so we'll allow. Any motion by the board? Please proceed.
Yeah, some rushed into the parking lot with unsafe, uh, speed, maybe due to the late arrival, and also some parked their cars in the driving throughways. I wouldn't, I don't know how to explain, uh, explain this, because you have circulation, right? But there is a small section at the back of the, uh, the, you know, the, the main parking lot, it's a small parking lot without any kind of, throughout the way, but there is the driveways, right? And then you park your cars through your driveways and go to the parking lot space, and some of cars are parking on those driveways, not are on those, you know, wide lane designated parking spaces. Okay? And I guess it's due to the, uh, due to the, uh, lack of the parking space available, because that parking lot not only used by the, the community center, and also used by people in the, in the high school. So, you know, I, I don't mean that, you know, those people are, you know, parking, uh, not according to the safety precautions, or driving, coming, uh, not, you know, in, in the, in the, the, very unsafe speed. There are, there are bad people, but I'm presenting this is, is that the separation, why we separate the residential use and commercial use, because there's a good reason. Because people in the commercial settings, they rush in and rush out, right? It's very often, if you happen to be, you know, go, go, need to buy some bagels, the coffee in the morning, and you are very, you know, hurried going to work, you, you just, it's crazy, right? So those are the reasons that separates commercial and residential uses of the land. Okay? That is, that is because the, uh, the, uh, hit safety. So, sometimes, you know, beyond your intention and control, control, right? You, you cannot say, okay, all my congregation members are coming with good intention and good behavior. Secondly, a regular use of the facility five times a day from dawn to the last, to the last one is, you know, as late as between sunset and midnight, uh, with more in weekend or Friday, whatever. Uh, this is an open area where noise can easily penetrate hundred yards, if you know that section of the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, road, right? You have cars coming and out with annoying, a noise of engine starting, doors shouting, chip sounds to lock and unlock the door. So, another thing is, before the sunrise, for every day in your next door, is really a health hazard if you don't agree, okay? I used to live in, uh, in a place where, uh, my, my neighbor, he needs to go to work every like, five o'clock in the morning, and he has a kind of junky cars, and he when started, it's like, every, you know, I would say every neighbor, I was, you know, kind of, being awakened up every day at this five, and I really, really, I feel a kind of a healthy, uh, concern to me, okay? Even worse, during the long snowy winter in our town, we all have, we all remember those couple of years, right? A plow truck is necessary to clean the driveway on two sides of the huge parking lot. Remember? They have to start the first prayer before dawn, and you have to clean up the snow before then. This will make neighbor really unbearable experience, in my opinion. Over the long term, many health problems could develop due to lack of sleep, or sleep deprived, uh, and insomnia. Third, the proposed use also extends to other public gatherings throughout the year, such as potluck party that we observed, and other festivities, okay? Those are not kind of, uh, very well specified in the, in the site plan. We all have neighbors on left and right. Imagine that your next door neighbor having large number of people coming all the time, sometimes into the late night, it is quite a disturbing experience. I always think that if you have a neighbor like that, you will call police. It certainly will cause discomfort and anxiety. Fourth, the kids dropping places, I'm talking about inside of the premise. The kids dropping places in the middle of the far lane and sandwiched by two potential moving vehicles, if you remember the site plan, right? You know what I'm talking about, right, everyone? Which would cause potential accident. Okay? When I was asking this question to the, to Ms. Kong about, uh, this design, and I asked him very specifically, in his professional career, has he ever designed a dropping off space, or by any chance that he knew anything, uh, in any place that has such a design of the children dropping, dropping, uh, spaces? He said, "The answer is no." Second, fire safety. In, uh, general objective in the master plan, the second one, so we, I would just talk the first one, right? I presume the first one is the most important thing. The second one is to secure safety from fire, flood, panic, and other natural and man-made disaster. There are very real fire safety concern inside and outside of the premise. First, during the hearing of the fire, uh, evacuation plan, both town fire official, Ms., Mrs. Lake, and Liberty Corner Fire, uh, Firehouse Chief, uh, Mr. Abraham, expressed their serious concerns. Uh, here I quote, uh, what Ms. Lake, Ms. Lake said. The project's fire safety was hampered by having a relative narrow lot with an angled building that could leave worshippers and emerging, emergency responders then locked to the rear. The fire chief also testified that the firefighting response would be hampered by, among the other things, the proximity, proximity of the proposed building to fire lanes and the resulting, resulting risk for firefighters and truck to pass under the buildings, pass under buildings collapsing, uh, a collapse zone. The close proximity of only six feet from building structure to fire lane definitely poses a serious threat to firefighters as well as fire, uh, fire equipment. The narrow fire truck circulation pass inside the parking, parking lot, uh, the parking in east side of the parking lot, I would say east, southeast side of, of the parking lot, will further hamper the firefighting efforts. I think this is well, uh, kind of, uh, the, uh, addressed by Mr. Cody Smith, right? In the snow days, in and out of the site become a nightmare, if not all impossible. Uh, I didn't bring a photo. If you all remember, how the, the snow days, how we accumulated snow, right? I have a two-car, you know, two-car lane driveway, and for the last couple of years, I cleaned up snow. Uh, last year was not as bad, the snow is about this high. The year prior, my snow is, uh, over my kid's head, or actually over my head. So this is a small, just a small kind of driveway, okay? Two-car driveway. I pushed the snow on the side to, to get the driveway out. And imagine, for a, for a parking space has a one-hundred-and-seven, uh, car parking space, how much snow it will, will generate it? Okay? I cannot imagine where the snow will go, because if you look at the site play, it's a, a site plan, the circulation into the building, especially, uh, entering the building kind of make a curve, right? There's not much kind of space on the two sides, right? I don't, really don't know where the snow goes. And also, as Mr. Cody Smith pointed out, when the snow pro, pushed, pushed the snow against any kind of wall, or, or, you know, grass, or whatever, it stops in that particular eastwards, east, the east side, uh, parking space, that will kind of, you know, push against the wheel dropper, right? Right? So, effectively, effectively, that the space, about two feet of a space that your car can push into it, stop at the wheel stop, that is disappearing, okay? You know what I'm talking about, right? Everyone understand, right? So effectively cut two feet short of the parking space. So, uh, very kind of disturbing thing is that when Mr., Mrs. Lake and Mr. Fire Chief was the kind of, uh, the testifying, the, testified, uh, their, their opinion, they were challenged, right? And grilled by Mr. Raymar during their testimony. And, uh, they both stand firm on their belief based on their professional education and training. We feel safe and confident that we have very high-quality professionals safeguard our community. Third, preserving the characteristic of the neighborhood in the master plan, uh, that's objective for land use and management objectives. Land use policy should strive to maintain and enhance community character, protect the integrity of existing neighborhoods, and prevent the intrusion of incompatible new development. The building of this proposed structure, uh, will in many ways change the characteristic of this neighborhood. First, the land will be largely covered by the building and the road service materials. The impermeable service is much larger than the fire station across the street, which has only seventy parking space. We all know the Liberty Corner Fire, uh, Firehouse, right? I have some picture here, I'm not picture the, uh, the aerial kind of, uh, view of this mechanic.
Just so you know, there's already, remember that aerial that's in evidence?
Uh-huh.
That showed the whole neighborhood? Do you want to put additional aerials in evidence?
Well, it's not evidence, it's just give you some kind of visual comparison, if, if public want to take a look.
Well, do you want the board to see it, or not?
I want you to see it.
Then it's evidence, then you want it to be admitted as evidence.
Okay, if, if that could be. Just passing it around.
Sure.
Oh, okay, sure, you can have yours. Thank you. Uh, let me have some more if you, I just need one for myself. Let me have some more if you, I just need one for myself.
Well, you, you, hold on, hold on.
They're not in evidence.
They're on evidence, yeah.
Oh, okay, alright.
Mr. Raymar, do you have a problem with this?
What's the source, let's get the source.
Oh, this is from the Google map.
Hold on one second, Mr. Raymar, there's a, a front and a back. The front is the before, the back is the after.
Well, you are, you are in front of me. Yeah, there is a front and a back.
On the,
Can we can hear it?
Yeah, first of all, the, the, the Google map that's the base of this document on either side is not objectionable.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, you can't hear.
The Go, the Google map that's the base is not objectionable. Then someone on one side added the word before and someone on the other side added the word after.
On the before side, someone also added.
Yeah, and I was gonna get to that. And then someone drew something on the before side, I don't know who did it and I don't know whether it's accurate. And then on the after side, someone superimposed a site plan. It's so small, I don't know if that's the most current one or not. And I don't know whether the scale is identical to the scale of the rest of the Google map.
Okay, did you do the superimposing of the site map and the boundary lines?
Yes, I did. I don't think Google has it yet.
Well, just so you know, our, the townships, engineering department and planning department and the various experts, they, they submitted exhibits that had the property lines scaled. So there is some way to do it, obviously you and I don't know how to do it, but there is a way to do it.
Well, I don't know if he knows how to do it or not, so I'm gonna find out. Was that the scale? Do you know if that's the scale or is that just your best estimate of how it will look?
Before, when you drew the property line,
Well, I, I the best, best knowledge of my,
Is this, is this just your hand drawn?
Yeah, this is my hand draw.
Best estimate.
And how about the, on the flip side, the, the site plan?
I superimposed myself, yes.
How did you determine the best appropriate scale or not?
Well, I,
Against your best estimate?
Yes.
Okay.
It doesn't have property lines on it, correct?
No.
You know, if we just look at the,
Mr. Raymar, hold on. Let's just deal with the exhibit itself.
Well, kind of nice suggestion. What he's trying to create is already on the aerial map, that's the first page of the pending site.
Can you just give us the sheet, please?
CO1.
Okay.
And, and if you look at it, his hand drawing is not identical to what's on the site plan. And it shows, obviously it's not the proper scale, we don't have a question.
It's not a certified drawing, you, you can't testify that it's the scale. It, it's potentially confusing to the finder of fact, which is the board, and, and should not be relied upon for that reason. You have the other exhibit, which is part of the plans. You can, if you want to make the same arguments relying on that depiction in, in the certified plans.
Could have put on the zipper down on the screen.
Dave, can you help us get that sheet up?
So what is your ruling on the, the handout?
It's excluded.
Okay, so here, this is excluded on Mark 1, OZ1 for ID only. The ruling is it's excluded from evidence. Any board members making a motion on that? No board members made a motion on that.
Okay, thank you.
I don't, I'm not gonna see it.
1214 plan.
CO1, you have to go back, go back up. Okay, and you go to that 91914.
Complacent plan?
Yeah, there you go.
Can we draw out this one a little bit? I want the, the, the aerial map. Sorry, we will not clear it, please, become orientation. Okay, we can go a little bit smaller, 200 maybe? A little smaller, I want to see the, the Firehouse across, yes, yeah, that's what I want to show, yeah. Okay, thank you. Alright, oh, this is a much better thing. Can I proceed?
Yes.
Okay.
Can, can you give an estimate about how much longer you have?
Oh, I can be finished less than maybe five minutes, okay? Yeah, just need a quick question.
So first of all, can someone identify what's up on the screen? Dave's slide.
What sheet that is?
It's sheet CO1, I believe.
So that's a portion of sheet CO1, is that portion of sheet CO1 on the screen? Okay, there we go.
Okay, thank you. Well, on this aerial kind of view of the property, I, you know, the reason I want to shoot this, I want to demonstrate in proportionally this relate to the, you know, the, the Firehouse across the street. Because people don't have kind of relations how big this property is, right? I'm talking about the characteristic of the, of the surroundings. So, this one, the, the impermeable services that covered by buildings and road and the, the, you know, parking materials are larger than the fire station across the street, which only have, has 70 parking spaces. What we have here, 104, right? Two, the wooden fence will be raised in neighbors, in the neighborhood, not seen in, in this section of the, of the, the, the town, okay? Here, we rarely see any kind of fence. And to be honest with you, I see a lot of kind of driveways are not paved, are kind of dirty, you know, dirty, dirt roads or, or those are small, small kind of stones, right? The third, there are two large retention basins, that one, one in the front and another one in the, you know, in the front, kind of facing the main roads, and that is never seen in any of this anywhere. I don't know where anyone seen it, a detention center, retention, retention basin in front of a house, next road? No seen here. Four, 34 feet high mineral. I think all those are in sharp contrast to the, to, to the, the natural scenic, undeveloped and open characteristic of this land of the neighborhood. So what is the issue here? I think the issue that has driven this for three years and the 24, 24 hearing is not about whether or not we promote the, the, you know, diversity of this community. It's not about the virtue of the Sunday school, we all know it's good, okay? It's not about the making history, because you can make, make history somewhere else in the town that appropriate for this purpose. The issue here is about respect. It's about to respect the rule and the more importantly, respect the spirit of the master plan and ordinance. Second, respect the neighbors. And three, third, respect historical and nature of this section of the town. There are so many signs that indicating the outcry, I mean those, those yard sign, indicating those outcry of the neighbors. There are volunteers of resident devoting time, financial resources to deal with issue, to deal with this issue. People who are not land engineers, not lawyers, not ordinance experts raised to the call. When you see the one site is represented by an outsider lawyer and another site is by united resident and individuals who live, breathe, drink, walk, see and hear in this neighborhood, you know which site you should stand with. On the other hand, okay, let's put our shoes, you know, stand in our other people's shoes. What if I am a member of this organization, try to raise or, you know, build a facility in here? When I come to this place to attend service five times a day and seven days a week, I want to go to a place that resembles a peace and harmony, but this is just a fit, doesn't fit. In conclusion, it is a logic for person to ask. And I want to ask Ms. Shadri, our, you know, former mayor, what are the comparing reason to build such a huge facility in a adjacent, in a area that, in adjacent to a historic site? In the residential area between two single family houses? And in the area already experienced traffic headache across the Firehouse that would potentially hamper the first response to the majority of the town resident? And I just give a kind of, an addition to, to address the question answered by Mr. Mrs., who is not here today. Yeah, want to clarify that how many resident and, and business were serving, are serving by the Liberty Corner Firehouse? It's about 6,500, it's in their website. So last but not least, it is in the contrast to the natural surroundings. I really want to know what is the comparing reason? I think the board should know as well, thank you.
Thank you. Any cross examination? Alright, seeing that, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to be heard? Indicate with show hand, anyone else? Come on up.
Come on up if you have, if you want to speak, because if you don't, conclude the public hearing.
Well, if you're ready, let's, it's time to go.
Not going to continue until office board?
If you hear, it's gonna be continued, but not public comment, the board wants to get the public comment. Yeah.
Oh, alright. Okay, let's see, I'll cut it short. Barbara Berger, 94 Church Street.
Put your name and address on the sheet?
Yes, I did. I have been sworn in.
What's your first name again?
Barbara.
I'm gonna swear you in again, just in case. I swear the testimony and comments you're gonna give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, I hope you got it.
Yes, I do.
What's your address?
94 Church Street. I have been to most of the meetings. Initially, I was up here asking Mr. Shadri. And prior to that, there were phone calls. And I told him in the one, the first phone call, I said, I wouldn't want my own church there. I said, I wouldn't want any church there. And I'm not, I'm not anti-Muslim, I'm not anti-Jewish, I'm not anti-anything. I'm open minded. But I told him it's not the location, it's just not. I said Liberty Corner can't take it, can't take anymore. You know, my late husband and I moved to Liberty Corner 30 years ago. And we came from Basking Ridge, because Liberty Corner, we thought was gonna be quiet, peaceful. We just love the village. And we built our home. I've been a widow 20 years. And I've been maintaining my home on my own. And so many people said, why don't you move? Why are you doing your lawn? Why do you have a tractor? Why are you doing all this? And I said, because I love Liberty Corner. It's a place that I want to stay. And I want it to be peaceful and quiet. I wanted to retain the same character that my late husband and I fell in love with. And I even saved an article from 19, let's see, it was from the Burnersville News, from 1990. And it was on Liberty Corner. And it was about this Robert Gutter, he was a Maristown architectural historian. He was commissioned to apply for the historical registration for Liberty Corner. And he said, he made many comments in the article, I have copies if you'd like to look at. And he, he commented on Liberty Corner, on the historical value and the church, Liberty Corner Church, and all the homes on Church Street and Lions Road, etc. And he said that without an effort by the residents, Liberty Corner will not survive as it is. And so, he was telling the residents in a lecture that he gave, that it's the, if it's the kind of place that you love, it's up to you to keep it that way. And that's why we've been here for three years. That's why we've put up preserve Liberty Corner signs. It's all because we care about our town. And I had something else to comment on. I really feel, I feel for the Islamic society, because they do want to have a place. But you know, I did some research online. And I found that there was a Muslim architect that said, there's different things that you want to and do not want to do when you build a mosque. And you want to build large. This is not a large complex. You want to have a basement, you want to have handicap. And most of all, you do not want to be invasive in an area that is a neighborhood that is cherished as we are cherishing Liberty Corner. And I have copies of this newspaper article also. But I am against.
Thank you, any questions? Any cross exam? No, saying no, no, thank you, Ms. Speaker. Any other member of the public?
My name is Isabel Ortega.
Can you spell your last name?
O-R-T-E-G-A. I live in 21 Prescott Court. And I,
Can you raise your right hand?
Yes.
You swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, I hope you got it.
Yeah, I swear. So I moved to Basking Ridge five years ago, seeking for a charming, quiet and residential area and community. And I oppose anything that will disrupt this quiet and peaceful area. We do not want anything that will generate, generate more noise, especially near the park where my kids play. Why the applicant want to impose a place that does not fit into a residential area? I do not understand what is the principle of insisting to build a temple when huge amount of residents are opposing. I am a professional woman and worried mom, opposing the building of this temple in this area. Why they want to establish a temple, temple where they do not have space to grow? And that implies so much constraints to them and the community. It is an incompatible new construction. It is, and it will be an overused building in a residential area. We like it here the way it is, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Any cross exam? Any other member of the public wishing to be heard? You may be.
My presentation is over now.
Okay, so.
Someone's glass?
Oh, it's me.
My name first. Okay, my name is Xu Shuangzhen. It will be a difficult one for you.
Yeah, can you spell it slowly, the first and second?
Okay. X-I-U-S-H-U-A-N-G. That's the first name. Last name?
It's late, you gotta go slower than that.
Okay. X-I-U-S-H-U-A-N-G. Sorry.
Okay.
And last name is C-H-E-N-G.
Okay, got it. Your address?
77 Dorchester Drive at Baskin Ridge. Sorry, I'm very nervous.
That's all right. No, no reason to be nervous.
I didn't know this is the last public hearing.
Can you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do. I will be very short, only one point to be made. That is, I don't know how the planning board make judgment on either approve or disapprove a proposal, but I think the planning board, the ordinance, and also the master plan provides you indication on what are the necessary conditions that a plan should be approved. And, but I, and I realize that this proposal obviously meets the necessary condition, because, for example, the, I think the necessary condition is that it meets the zoning code allowance. This is the necessary condition, otherwise this project will not exist. However, beyond the necessary condition, I think to approve a project like this, it also needs to meet the sufficient conditions. You need to see if all the conditions are sufficient and complete and satisfy all the criterias that should be considered. For example, the, for example, the, for example, the charac-, characteristics of the neighborhood, the feeling of the existing residents, the potential risk to, the potential fire risk inside the parking, inside the lot, the kids drop-off zone, safety hazard that is sitting between two moving vehicles possibly, and the access to in and out of the fire trucks that covers most of the community inside my own home. And also the voice, the voice of the neighbors that are living right next to it or around this area. So I think all these suffi-, all these should constitute your, to base your condition upon if this proposal meets all the sufficient condition for your approval. I, I beg you to, to consider that. And if the zoning code is the only criteria and make it sufficient and necessary for your approval, then I think the intelligence of the entire planning board is by, by and large, underutilized. Because I think this is why you, we need so many intelligence behind the bar to make a decision, to consider, to take all these elements into consideration when you make a decision. With that, I finish.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Any cross-exam? Any, any other members of the public? How, how long is your presentation, sir?
It can be five minutes.
Okay, come on up. We're not, we're not jumping over you, Mr. Speaker, because it's not practical to start you if we're... You signed it and everything?
Yes, I did.
Okay, the name, please?
First name, spell X-I-N-G-Y-U-E, and last name, H-U-A-N-G.
First name one more time, please? Okay, got it.
Okay. And the address is 18 Vanderreer Drive, Baskin Ridge.
Can you raise your right hand?
Sure.
You swear the testimony and comments that you're going to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do. So, I guess I've been on and off into this hearings when I'm available for this. And I've heard all kinds of argument, all kinds of evidence. And I, first of all, really appreciate the, you know, planning board members for your, you know, effort and your, you know, you know, tireless sort of working hours and to cover this. And one of the thing, a few things I think I want to kind of highlight here. The number one is that appears the neighborhood who are close to this, you know, proposed site has the most affected people. If you look at those people who here, stay here all the way every time, those people are going to affect the most. They could, their ne-, you know, their neighborhood could get affected, and their home value could be affected. As someone mentioned earlier, this could end up in court. I think I want the members to think about if someone has to spend money because of this. If it's necessary for making, for you make a decision, that could have one or another affect their life, which is a very significant one. That's number one. Number two, as a board of the township, I know you are looking for the, you know, after all the, you know, well health and well-being and safety of the residents of the township, of course. But at the same time, I wonder, when you make this, forget about audience, but also hear the voice from residents, from all the citizens about their opinion. Because what happened that you don't want to cause any conflict in the future or safety concern, whatever that could be, because that'd be a bigger issue, right? Because, you know, and things could, you know, we all have open mind, we all have different, you know, beliefs and religions. But some of the decision will affect some people and affect the township more than other. And the decisions, why should you make that one? And why people say, they all have open mind, they said, "Maybe we should consider this for a different place, or different location." And why that is the case? Not many of us are well-educated, and we're moving into this town to get a good education for our kids, have a family, and so on and so forth. And as town, you know, planning board, I think that's what we're looking out for you, to you, to kind of help us to protect the township and protect the world best. So I think I really appreciate and thank you for your effort. And I don't want to say some of the residents, their, you know, life, second part of their life, their financial, you know, resources get because of this decision. So the very important decision you are had. So I, what I want to say is that when you make that decision, think about twice about that decision could have impact on some people, particularly some neighbors who are not far away from this site. That's what I'm asking you to do. And the audience is one thing, but the people, the neighborhood, is a very different thing. And the audience could be changed, right? And some point, maybe the audience wasn't changed, because I was told that, you know, a few years ago, after the implication, the audience was changed. So in a sense that, why we change the audience? What's the basis for that? I think in that sense, we think about something higher, and the safety, the community, and the whole township as a big whole, besides those people getting affected. And to some extent, it is a democratic process, but if you think about it small, and we do think about, you know, the, you know, high court judicial decision, also based on the number of people who voted no or yes as well. So in this kind of lot of hearing process, you see, people express their opinion, their, you know, concerns and so on and so forth. And I think that really is the decision for you to say, "Should we consider this very carefully? Should I have a vote? Should I have, you know, ask the residents to say how you think about this, if that is too difficult for you?" Again, thank you all very much, and I think I'm really impressed with sort of how hard you have been working on this one. Every hearing is always very, very late, so I thank you all for this. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the board? Any cross-examination from anyone? Thank you, sir. Any, any other members wishing to be heard? Please come up.
My name Janet Ashnault.
My phone?
Oh. Janet Ashnault.
Can you spell her last name? And your address?
309 Douglas Road.
Okay, can you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony and comments that you're going to make in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do. I wasn't going to speak tonight. I, I wasn't, I had changed my mind about speaking tonight, because a lot of what I had to say had to do with what is in the master plan regarding land use. And one of the previous speakers, we kind of nullified what he was saying about that. So I'm going to skip that part of my comments. And I, it's going to be short, but I do have a couple other points to make. I've been a resident of Liberty Corner for 23 years, where I've been happily living out my childhood dream of having a small farm with a couple of horses in my yard. I pay my taxes to Bernard's Township. My mailing address is Far Hills. But when somebody asks me where I live, I, I, even though I know it will usually require an explanation, I always say Liberty Corner. Many years ago, I commented before this board in opposition to the construction application filed by the Millington Baptist Church, whose property was right around the corner from my home. Thankfully, that project never came to fruition. More times than you would, than you may think, when I am enjoying the ambiance of my neighborhood, I think to myself, things would have been very different if that church would have been built. So here we are again with another Liberty Corner neighborhood faced with the possibility of a public building constructed directly in the middle of several residences and also our local firehouse. Okay, so I was going to talk about the land use in the master plan, but I'll skip that. So, I really love living in Liberty Corner, and I'm grateful to the township for what has been done to increase my property value throughout the past 23 years by keeping this a very desirable area in which to live. For many of us, our homes are the largest financial investment that we'll ever make, and we really count on you to protect that investment. I don't know statistics on how being next to a public building devalues a home, but I do know I would think twice before purchasing a home in that type of configuration. If the application is approved, I will really feel for those Church Street neighbors that are most directly affected. When it comes time for them to sell, will we ever know what price they could have gotten for their homes? Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Any cross-examination? Any other members of the public?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman. My name is Brian Curley. I am not a resident of the township, but I wish to speak. To Hardin Court, Chester.
Can you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony and comments that you're going to make in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do. Thank you for the board for giving me the opportunity, even though I'm not a resident. I rise to speak in behalf of the ISBR, in behalf of my wife and my daughter. I am not Muslim. I am Catholic. My wife is Muslim. My daughter is raised in both traditions. It's difficult to raise her in both traditions, because it's difficult to find a mosque close by. It's difficult to find a mosque close by that has the kind of teachings and the kind of traditions that we want her exposed to for the Muslim faith. Now, there's a lot of talk about do it elsewhere. But I asked the board to stop, and there's many ironies in this. First of all, we're talking about a proposed mosque on Church Street. I find irony in that. I also find irony in the fact that, I don't know the history of Bernard's Township, but it being chartered in 1760, I have to guess that many of the residents who initially settled this township probably came here because somebody told them at that time, "Go practice your faith elsewhere. Go set up your church elsewhere. Go do it elsewhere." There's plenty of other suitable places. I sit on the Board of Adjustment for Chester Township. I've taken the same oath as you all have here. And I trust that you all take that oath seriously. I'm sure you do. But this is not a popularity contest. This is not about how many residents are, do we weigh on one side that protest, and how many do we weigh on the other side that are for it? We all know that. But after three, four years, and, and I commend this board for sitting through all of that testimony. But having sat through long and contentious applications myself, I'm also an attorney, and I've had long and contentious cases, and I've had them come out in a way that I might not have expected. But I do know that after four years, this has become a Rorschach test. I don't know how this board will go back over four years' worth of testimony and go over all of the things that are necessary to render a decision in this matter, at least in a timely manner. I commend you, and I bless you in the effort that's ahead of you, because that is a gargantuan effort. But I'm sure that there's also a lot that can be discarded along the way, because much of it is not relevant. Much as Mr. Raymar is taking heat for objecting to relevancy, we all know that that is part of, this is a permitted use. And I ask the board not to treat this as a Rorschach test, not to simply treat this as a Christmas tree where we can find a branch to hang some ornament on there, because there's enough branches established after four years' worth of testimony. There's more to this than that. First of all, as a permitted use, what are you permitting? I ask the board to keep that in mind, because that is an impact. Yes, there may be an impact on the community, but there will also undoubtedly be an impact on the people who want to practice their faith, my wife and my daughter in particular. And I rise to speak for them, as I said. And I ask the board to consider that. This is, at its core, weighing what the legal aspects are, what the relevant evidence is, and whether or not this use should be permitted on this property. Someone else testified earlier, this is not about speculation. Either way, this is about what is the proper use of this property, and will it be permitted in the confines of the law? And I urge the board, I know how hard it is sitting in your seat to put aside the emotion and living in the community and all of the things that go along with that. And I ask the board, please remember that oath that you took to decide this matter on the law, on the merits, on what's involved. And that if you do consider anything beyond that on the periphery, consider that this is a house of worship. After four years, I don't know if you've set a record for this type of a proceeding. My good friend, Mr. Simon, may know better, since he practices in this area and would know which, if there have been any applications that have gone longer than this. But you have a task ahead of you, a large task ahead of you. I ask you to consider, I implore you to consider, and put aside any personal preferences, any prejudices, anything else other than, consider the law and consider that it will have an impact, no matter what you do both ways. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Mr. Curley. Any questions from the board? Any cross-exam? Any other members of the public?
My name is Birger Brinklund. First name is Birger, B-I-R-G-E.
My name is Birger Brinklund. First name is Birger, B-I-R-G-E-R. Last name is Brinklund, a double hyphenated last name. B-R-I-N-C-K hyphen capital L-U-N-D.
And address?
One ninety Alexandria Way, Baskinridge.
Can you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony and comments that you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you guys.
I do. I've listened, and I rise now on behalf of the citizens in Liberty Corner. I thank the gentleman from Chester for his observations and his lecture to the, the board. I'm sure you needed that. I'd like to state that there are five other locations, possibly in Baskinridge, that would accept and welcome this project. And now I find out there's one in Chester, too, apparently. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Finally, I conclude, I conclude by saying that I'm opposed to this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Any cross-exam? No. Any other members from the public wishing to be heard at this time? Mr. Quick, you still have an hour?
Ten thirty, I'm usually in bed ten thirty.
No, I'm saying your presentation is still an hour?
Yeah.
All right, in light of the hour, Mr. Quick, we're not going to start your presentation tonight. You're going to be first up on August fourth, okay? You're, you're available?
I will.
Okay. So, sort of transporting the Raymar, Simon letter to the next meeting upon the conclusion of...
Okay, so let's, let's do that, so let's just see if...
We're going to follow the same format. If we wrap up by nine thirty, Mr. Simon, you'll be ready to go.
Well, you, you've now asked the public, does anyone else left to speak? If there's only one person left to speak, then, then this public hearing should be closed except for Mr. Quick. Otherwise, you're going to have 20 more people.
No, I, if, if we're not done, we're not done. It's, it's quarter to twelve, okay? I've, I've got board members that are getting tired.
All I'm saying is, this was supposed to be the last public hearing. You have kindly let everyone who wanted to speak, speak.
Wait, who said it was the last public hearing? We, we were hopeful.
We never said that.
I can't...
Just, just to make things, just to make things clear for a second. In your own letter, it says, should the public portion not conclude by the end of July twenty-one, then the goal would, the goal would be to complete the public portion on August fourth. That's what the proposal from both of you, which the chairman accepted, and the board went along with his, so it's... Yeah, everyone was hopeful it would, it would conclude, but even you guys recognize that it might not, and...
And while I'm grateful to my fellow board members for hanging in there as long as they did in the hope that we might get through public comment, we gave it the college try. It's quarter to twelve, and I've got a member of the public who happens to be the owner of the house directly adjacent to the application, who hasn't gone yet.
I'm not, I'm not trying to cut him off.
I understand that, but until he goes and finishes, it's not over. It's, we can't preemptively say he's the last one when, when he's... We're not prepared to go tonight to finish. And I'm not, believe me, I'm not ending now to create that possibility. We really were trying to, to get to a point where you and Mr. Simon could close. We didn't get there, so there's nothing I can do about that. And we're going to pick up. He's first up, Mr. Quick will be first up out of the gate on August fourth. If, if there are other people present at that meeting that have not yet given their public comment who appear at that time and want to be heard, then they can be heard.
If they're repetitive, you can object on the basis of being repetitive because about every issue other than Mr. Quick's issues, which again, he's the direct next-door neighbor. But if, if other people are repetitive, and they're just repeating what other people already said, then you'll object on that basis. But the, the hearing is going to be continued to August fourth. Again, the entire meeting is being dedicated to that. There might be that little completeness thing you heard about before, that's going to be five minutes of that. And it's also continued to August eighteenth, in case it's needed, which we're hoping it's not. And, and I would hope that, just like the chairman said, that the, that the joint proposal in your letter and Mr. Simon's letter still stands, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Simon, correct?
In terms of the public portion ends before nine thirty, I would...
Would go, and if it doesn't, then you don't.
Okay.
And that, and that's, quite frankly, that's why we have August eighteenth there, just in case also. After the public hearing completes, and after the closing's complete, the board has indicated it needs some time, as the member of the Chester Board of Adjustment recognized it's four years' worth of stuff. And maybe you don't know, but the board secretary...
Yeah, how did it get to four years? How did it morph into four years?
The board secretary has been compiling a notebook for the board, which has every single exhibit in it and every single set of minutes from the beginning so that they have something to review, but they are going to need time to review that and compose their thoughts before they deliberate. So the, again, we're continued to August fourth, two thousand and fifteen, no need for further notice. Also, August eighteenth, and the application's already been extended to September thirtieth. Let's leave well enough alone for now and just leave it at that.
Okay. All right, the application's carried. All right, members from con... comments? Comments from staff? Thank you, gentlemen. None? Motion? Secretary, thank you. All in favor, aye, all in disfavor, aye.